Yes, Jim, I can hear you.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome. I'd like to call this meeting of the Bloomington City Council to order. Welcome to all for our first virtual hybrid meeting of 2021. Good to have everybody back. We're going to start our meeting, as we always do, with the Pledge of Allegiance. If you would please stand and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Once again, welcome. Welcome to my council colleagues back. Good to have you back at the council dais with me. Welcome to the members of the public who are here for the first time since, I think, before St. Patrick's Day in 2020. So glad to have everybody back. Thanks for joining us. And thanks to everybody who are still watching at home and to our three council members who are also participating from home. We are doing this, as I said, virtually but in a hybrid fashion. So we will have four of our council members here. We have three council members still participating from home. And we will be working through all of this and trying to make it all work and keep all the balls in the air at the same time. So this will be an interesting one. As we get started this evening, Ms. Christensen, if you could please call the roll call of the council.
Yeah, I don't know. I have everything on mute, I thought.
Do we want to test audio first before we do roll calls?
Ms. Christensen, if you could please call the role of the council.
Thank you. Councilmember Beloga.
Present.
Councilmember Carter.
Present.
Councilmember Coulter.
Present.
Councilmember Loman.
Present.
Councilmember Martin.
Present.
Councilmember Nelson.
Here.
Present.
Thank you. Mayor Bussie.
Present. We have all seven members of the council here with us this evening. Thank you for that. We're still trying to figure out some of the audio issues here. And we will keep working at it. With that, we, item three on our agenda is the approval of the agenda. Council, are there any additions or corrections or anything to add to the changes to tonight's agenda? Hearing none, I would move approval of tonight's agenda. We have a motion and a second by council member Carter for the approval of tonight's agenda. Hearing no further council discussion, Ms. Christensen.
Thank you. Beloga. Councilmember Beloga.
Hi.
Carter.
Hi.
Coulter.
Aye.
Loman.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Mayor Bussie.
Aye. Motion carries seven zero. We've got an agenda. And I think it's, I'm having trouble muting as well here. Ah, the technology.
I wonder if the issue is if you're using the WebEx app as opposed to going through the browser?
That could be too. Well, we'll figure it out as we, as we continue here. With that, let's move to item four on our agenda, which is our public comment period. And it's a 20-minute period at the beginning of each council meeting where we have five minutes for each speaker to talk about items not on tonight's agenda. And we start with our item 4.1, which is a response to the prior meeting's public comments. Mr. Verbrugghe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. Good evening. At the previous city council meeting, we had two residents who spoke. One addressed a question, I believe, generally, the city manager, and then the other was directed at the mayor. And Sally Ness asked about the city council's rules of procedures and specifically Section 18A regarding decorum and asked if residents can expect that that will be followed. I would say the answer to that is yes. It is up to the city council within the rules of procedure to enforce those rules amongst themselves. And so if there is a perceived violation of the rules of decorum within our procedure, it's up to the council members to identify that and work through the identified process to resolve it. Ms. Ness also asked if residents could be assured that issues happening in places such as Minneapolis, where we see protests leading to shutdowns of traffic or intersections or neighborhoods, if that will not be allowed to happen in Bloomington. What I would say to that is that our police department has done a very good job, as well as our other staff, who work with folks when we know that there is a protest or public assembly that is going to occur, to work with those groups to ensure a very safe event, whether it's for the, for the, those who are assembling or for others in the, in the community, whether it's in a neighborhood or traffic that is passing through. And we certainly appreciate that for the past year, when we've seen a number of those events occurring, that they have been willing to meet with, with our staff to coordinate logistics on that, to work out details and to allow us to help assist them where we can to make sure we keep a safe environment. I think that's the, the most that we can do within the grounds for public assembly and for peaceful protest. And we appreciate the efforts of our staff to make sure that that is being done safely.
And then, Mr. Mayor, I believe there's one other comment for you. Indeed. Council, any questions of the city manager?
If you would, I did actually have one other. Ms. Pam Palmer sent a request for comment via email regarding the homelessness in Bloomington and specifically the situation with homeless people being housed in hotels. And we have an update scheduled for the council in two weeks. On June 28th, Erica Coleman, our HRA administrator, will be making a presentation to the council to discuss this very issue at the very beginning of the meeting.
Again, council, any questions? Seeing none. Ms. Amber Mathwig also asked, her comments, the notes that I have here applauded the recent leadership of the Anti-Racist Coalition, asked for a response as to why Mayor Bussie wouldn't listen to the constituent concerns regarding the thin blue line flag. And actually, the, the Anti-Racist Coalition is the Bloomington Anti-Racist Coalition. They are a group of high school students and recent graduates of Bloomington High School. And they were the ones who, in addition to the many phone calls and emails that I received and the, the leadership of other members of the community, that we did ultimately, we did ultimately respond to with the concerns about the flag. So I think it's, it's not necessarily correct to assume that it was outside influence, that it was folks from beyond our, our borders. People have weighed in from outside our borders on both sides of this issue. And I think we, we are listening primarily and working with and responding to primarily the people from Bloomington. And that's, that's what we'll continue to do as well. Council, any questions? If not, why don't we move on to item 4.2, which is our public comment period. As I said, a 20-minute period at each council meeting where residents have a chance to speak for up to five minutes on issues not on tonight's agenda. As we have done in the past, we, we do limit you to five minutes and we do have our shot clock working again. So please, if you could pay attention to that, because we do limit it to five minutes for each speaker to keep things equal for everyone. This isn't an opportunity for back and forth or to answer questions. This is an opportunity for us to listen to you. And we, we will answer questions on some basic issues if there are just general questions that we can answer, such as will, will we have a 3rd of July celebration, a sommer fetnah? The answer there is yes. But if, if there's anything more in depth, we will do it next week at our public comment period response. So we have a couple of people who have signed up ahead of time to speak tonight. I think, why don't we start with the folks who are online, if we could, Ms. Chaney, and see if we can get those comments? And then we'll turn it over to the folks here in the room.
Nora, this is Amy Chaney. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Do you have anyone on the line to speak to item 4.2?
Mr. Adam Rich, please press star one to speak for public comment. Please press star one. Mr. Adam Rich, can you please press star one, please? He doesn't want to speak. You may continue, presenters.
Is there anyone else on the line, Nora?
There is only one man joining the main conference right now.
Thank you.
All right, we have no one wishing to speak remotely. So we'll turn it over to the folks here. And again, I do think we have a couple of people who signed up ahead of time. And I believe, I'm sorry, Mr., Mr., why don't we start with Michael Picard? Michael, are you here? Good evening.
Mayor.
Good evening, welcome.
Council members, this is organized. I am the person who Councilmember Loman referred to at the end of the June 7th meeting regarding a golf ball hitting the windshield of my truck. On the morning of April 20th, I noticed a divot in my windshield and a golf ball on the boulevard. I emailed Dwan Golf Course and Ali Hassan, the assistant manager, telephoned me. He asked me if I had seen who hit the golf ball, and the answer was no. He told me that the policy of the golf course was that the neighbor whose property was damaged needed to identify who hit the ball and report it to the clubhouse before the golfer leaves. Once reported, a staff member would introduce the golfer and the neighbor. It is for them to work out compensation, even if the golfer is uncooperative. Since this, since this did not happen, there was nothing he could do. At the last council meeting, the city manager said, "We turned it over to the insurer." Actually, I filled out the insurance claim. They just forwarded the paperwork. If I had not filled this out, you know, the insurer would not know anything about my, my broken windshield. It's not policy to report damages. So paperwork was shuffled. I never heard one more word from any staff member. And I guess the reason is, why should they care? They have decreed that me and my neighbors are responsible for monitoring golfers to make sure they do not damage our property. All a part of the assumed risk of living across from a golf course, which I have never heard of. No one told me that when I moved in. Yes, the claim was denied. The reason, the city is not insured for these kinds of losses. Let me read from the letter I received from your insurer. "The ensuring agreement only allows for payment of a liability claim when we find the city and its staff were careless, reckless, or committed a wrongful act and are liable." They will never, they will never pay a claim for damages to any property by your paying customers. Maybe you need to look at your insurance documents, but that, that's the reality. Let me, let me take to an absurdity this absurd policy. Say I was walking on the sidewalk past Dwan and got struck in the head with a golf ball and got knocked out. When I came to, a staff member would ask me, "Did you see who hit the golf ball?" "No." Sorry. Too bad. Okay. Then if I filed a claim for medical expenses, your insurer would not pay since it is not a city employee who hits, hits the ball. Okay. This falls under the city manager's statement last week that knowing who hit the ball is sometimes difficult to do, and we recognize that. Recognize that. Let me finish that statement. Recognize that they are screwed. What I think should happen, pay for the replacement of my windshield. Change this absurd policy. You are charging people to come onto your property and launch projectiles towards mine, and you do not have a budget contingency for damages? Could a private, you know, business get away with that? How arrogant. What a medieval landlord lording it over the little people attitude. Sorry, the peasants are revolting. In the 14 years I have lived here, there's not one new screening project along the perimeter of the fencing that I am aware of. Expanded screening needs to be looked at. My question is, within 20 miles of the Twin Cities, there are 65 public golf courses. Since the city manager said this is a common policy, name five other golf courses that have the same policy as Dwan regarding damage to neighboring properties. Ideally, the policies of these five will be in writing so that they can be compared to the policy at Dwan, which I assume is in writing. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Picard. Appreciate that. Next on our list, Amber Mathwig. Amber, are you with us this evening?
Always. In fact, I've been working a lot last few days. I don't really have anything lengthy prepared for you. Just a couple of questions, probably from Mr. Verbrugghe. In light of what appears to be two identity motivated murders in our neighboring cities yesterday, I am curious how the city intends to control for concealed weapons and vehicular assaults when racist organizations are holding events on city property. And also, in response to Chief of Police Hartley's updates from last week, I am curious if the 100 hours of officer training includes identifying white extremism in our communities? And also, how does the city check in on office, on if officers themselves hold these extremist views?
Thank you. Next on our list is Andrew Thule. Mr. Thule, good evening.
We got a sign in still or no?
Uh, no, we've actually, we have you. Since you called ahead of time, we've got you.
Okay. Can I get the overhead? Guess we got the overhead working.
Grant, can we get the overhead, please?
So just give a little context right before the, this would be the council meeting started right before the coronavirus. I have always been known to be able to communicate with the council as far as coming up, being able to share a document. And so what I did is I forwarded a video to the council and the mayor and the manager about how you guys proceeded with ranked choice voting to change the city charter as far as ranked choice voting. Moved full steam ahead, wanting to change the charter against the will of the residents. Well, it passed by 96 votes. But you don't want to change the charter to protect public parks. So there is state statute that protects public parks. And the, the council and the mayor and the manager, they're not willing to protect the public parks. So I did forward that video to you. I wanted that video to be played, you know, in public comment in lieu of the coronavirus vaccine. Now, I understand the city was probably going through some trial and error, so, but there, here's my email here, and I just said I was very hopeful that my, my video was going to be presented at the open comment per the five-minute rule allowed. So oftentimes, staff, other staff members can communicate with the council using a PowerPoint presentation. So I just want to let the public know throughout the coronavirus, the phone system was terrible. You know, you guys can probably agree, right? The phone system was like, we'd get cut off. And I want to say thanks for letting us get back into the meeting a little bit later, you know, as far as that goes. But it was kind of like, finally, we can communicate with a little bit of overhead stuff here. So, um, but yeah, now, so my, my hopes is that my video is going to be played, you know, and that didn't get played. And so I wanted to show an email from the mayor here. He basically says, "We made the decision to limit the public comment period to only the pre-submitted emails or voicemails. There was never a plan to accept and play videos as part of the public comment period. As it appears, we'll be doing remote council meetings for the foreseeable future. I expect we'll get more comfortable with the technology involved and find ways to include public comments over video or the phone." So it would have been nice to have some WebEx videos where we could actually share, you know, like this document camera. I'm kind of happy to have this document camera back again. So it actually, it works to be able to share graphics, you know, with the public. I think the public, it's nice to actually see. So I just want to say to the mayor, you know, it would have been real nice during coronavirus, actually. I know you guys have the technology. I know you could have used it with the public, but I feel that the public's voice was silenced during the entire coronavirus. So I didn't appreciate it. And I think the public didn't appreciate it. They would have liked to share more documents, you know, with, with the, the management of Bloomington. So, and right here, he says, "I will admit that you did catch us not abiding by the rules we established prior to the meeting." So basically, the rules stated that come up to the podium, speak, share your document, right? And that's exactly what I did. I put my video out there. I expected it to be shared in, in the public comments. So pretty much that's all I have. Thank you. Oh, residents for Bloomington, better Bloomington right here. So this is a new group forming here. I hope the public in Bloomington will, we're on Facebook. Feel free to join us. But we're basically a, a resident group working, working together to make sure Bloomington is a better place to live and work. So that's, that's what we're out for. So we're, we're trying to protect our parks, make Bloomington a nice, safe place to be and a, and a good community to live in. So thank you.
Actually, Mr. Thule, I'll need to double check, but I think my response that I had there was, I believe it was, we allowed your comments to be read, even though they were submitted past the deadline. But I will double check that to be certain. But thank, thank you. I.
Yeah, yeah. Well, it was, oh, past the deadline?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, yeah, you did.
Yeah.
You allowed, it was, it was, I submitted them after.
So that's what I did when I said I was, I, we bent the rules a little bit to allow your comments to be submitted.
Basically, I just want to state, you know, like, I would have appreciated it, have been able to share a document.
Understood. Thank you much.
The technology would have been nice to use. You guys got it for other people, so.
Got it. Thank you. I believe that's everyone who signed up ahead of time for public comment. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on tonight's public comment? Please come forward.
I'll sign after I'm finished. Hi, Mayor, Council. My name is Anita Smithson. I live here in Bloomington. I just wanted to offer some praise and gratitude to Dustin from the forestry department. After watching a video on social media about our tree farm and the pebbles, there was a little bit at the end that said, "If you have questions about trees, you could call the forestry department." So I did that because we've got some spruce on our yard that are looking really sad. And we wanted to plant some more trees, but weren't really sure kind of where, where to go about it. So I just wanted to thank Dustin. He came out to my house. He chatted with me and my husband about the health of our current trees, as well as our future plans for short and long term, to plant some more trees on our lots. He was super helpful, and I just wanted to share my appreciation. I thanked him at that moment, but he probably doesn't share praise given to him, to, you know, others on his team or to his manager, whoever that might be. So I just wanted to recognize him and thank the city for a job well done in that respect.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak at tonight's public comment period?
Mr. Mayor.
Good evening, welcome.
My name is David Clark. And council members, on Sunday, May 16th, the flag was raised over the Bloomington City Hall in recognition of National Police Week. But the following Thursday afternoon, you, Mr. Mayor, were issuing an apology for the show of support for the Bloomington Police. Your attempt to once again engage in virtual signaling was appalling and confirmed what many already know to be true. You really do not support the police here in Bloomington. In the process, you threw your city manager, Mr. Verbrugghe, under the bus, since he was the one who approved the flying of the flag of support. Seems like you just can't help yourself. It's simply amazing that during National Police Week, a flag is flown that expresses support to the women and men in uniform, and you can't make it five days without jumping ship, bowing to radicals in our community by saying, "And quote, 'We apologize and we'll be having conversations with members of our community who have been impacted by this. We're committed to addressing our mistakes and finding opportunities where we can do better.'" You know who can do better? We, the community, can do better. We can do better by holding you accountable, Mr. Mayor. What if 500 people started protesting outside City Hall against the pride flag, which is offensive to so many in our, in our faith communities? Would you pull that flag down? Would you engage in conversations, in quotes, with those faith communities to ask how that flag is so offensive to them and the way they're trying to raise their children? Of course not. And here's who else can do better, the city council. When Rick Aliva, candidate for city council, challenged you several weeks ago to censure the mayor for his offensive and vile comments directed at a prominent man of our community, who's actually in the audience today, you were stone silent, city council. You did absolutely nothing, even though it was required of you in the council rules of decorum. You must censure the mayor. So here we are again with Mr. Mayor, this time as he reneges on support for the police by apologizing for a flag flown in their honor. By not supporting our police, he decreases public safety. You now have a choice tonight to make a motion to censure the mayor over this. So who will make a motion tonight to censure the mayor, to stand up for the police, to put some weight behind your claim that you care for public safety? If you can't support the police in here, don't bother trying to play lip service to the police out there when you're campaigning for reelection, particularly you, Mr. Coulter, and you, Mr. Martin. You can't have it both ways. You can't pay lip service to supporting our police and saying you're in favor of public safety and then stay silent when it comes to censoring the mayor. Take a stand. Make a motion to censure. Which one of you will stand up for public safety and do this tonight? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Anyone else? Good evening.
My name is Carrie DeGraff, and David just spoke on some of the matters that are strong on my heart. I'm really disappointed to see that you've flown the so-called gay pride flag. I don't care if it's Gay Pride Month or not. I'm a Christian. I see no reason to be singling out certain people groups and trying to elevate them. And then at the same time, our American flag is down more than it's up these days. Our American flag is inclusive to all people who are citizens of our country. That should be enough. There's no reason to elevate gay pride, anything. As a Christian conservative, I don't hate gay people. I've had gay people in my family. I love them very much. But I don't believe it's something we should be elevating, and this is still one nation under God. And I'm wondering who of any of you up here has the boldness to do something about it? You're letting all the values that have built our country go by the wayside. You're giving in to these bully groups. You certainly wouldn't treat those of us who are Christian conservative types with the same respect because we're usually very gentle people. But I'll tell you what, you've got one in front of you right now that you can light a fire, I can get a fire lit under me. So I hope you'll listen. And don't, don't sit there and act like you're believers in Jesus Christ if you're going to allow this stuff to continue, because you will be held accountable one day, not by me, by the one true God of the Bible. And I've said my little bit, so I'm going to sit down. Thank you.
And thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Barb Schneider. Excuse me.
Ms. Schneider, if you could, please pull the microphone down a little bit so we can. Ms. Schneider, if you could please pull the microphone down a little bit so we can hear you a little bit better. There you go, thank you.
Thank you. I wanted to publicly thank Police Chief Mike Hartley, uh, for your work and your dedication. Um, you sent out a, a, a general notice, uh, several weeks ago, uh, to the citizens stating what you were doing, um, to keep Bloomington safe in light of what was going on down at 38th and Chicago and in Brooklyn Park. And I just wanted to thank you. That was a very welcome communication, and we have had a great deal of, um, when my husband was still, um, a lot of service from the police department. It was beyond reproach. It was wonderful. You've got a wonderful force. And compromising the advertisement of that through lowering the flag and making apology for it is not in keeping with anything that a city government ought to be doing. So thank you all for your service. It has been a trying time for everyone, and I hope that, um, the best standards and values that this country was founded on will be in play. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak tonight? Seeing no one coming forward, we will close tonight's public comment period, and we will move on to item five, our introductory items, and our item 5.1, which is our external auditor's report on our 2020 annual financial report. Mr. Jim Eikten from our auditors, MMKR, is here with us this evening to present our audit report. Good evening, Mr. Eikten, welcome.
Well, thank you. Laurie, you want to introduce, or should I just?
Oh, I'm sorry. Laurie, I'm, I'm sorry. Ms. Economy Scholler, our CFO, I didn't, I didn't know you were going to be, uh, the emcee for this, I apologize.
Uh, Mayor and Council, with us this evening is Jim Eikten, managing partner of Malloy, Montague, Kornowski, and Radosovich. MMKR is, uh, what we kindly refer to them as, and Jim will present the results of our 2020 annual financial report. Thank you, Jim.
Thanks, Laurie, Mayor. Thank you for the introduction as well. Uh, members of council, uh, administration of the city, uh, thanks for having me this evening. I'm here to present the audit results for the year on December 31st, uh, 2020. I do have a PowerPoint that I'm going to share so I can, uh, go through, uh, my information in a PowerPoint sort of fashion. Uh, first and foremost, um, uh, it is a requirement of the city to have an annual financial statement prepared. That annual financial statement is required to be, uh, prepared in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles in, uh, the United States, including, uh, accounting principles of the, uh, uh, governmental accounting standards board. Uh, the auditor's, uh, role in this is to provide an opinion on that financial statement, uh, such that it, it abides by the various, uh, requirements in those standards. As part of the audit process in the, uh, uh, United States of America, we're also required to test your internal controls over financial reporting. Uh, we're also required to test your compliance with internal controls and the various laws and regulations that relate to the various financial reporting elements, uh, of, uh, those particular standards. As part of the audit, we are also required to audit your compliance with Minnesota state laws and regulations. The Office of the State Auditor in the state of Minnesota, uh, provides us with a list of the laws that we are required to test. Uh, we don't test every law, just those laws on the list. And then lastly, you're, we are required to complete what's called a single audit of federal awards. That particular, uh, set of audit standards is guided by the federal government, uh, who provides us with a list of the rules that we're required to test for each individual major program. And the pro- major programs do change, uh, uh, from year to year depending on the regulations that are provided by the federal government. As part of that process, we also test your internal controls specifically related to each of the individual program, as well as any sort of compliance items that, uh, might relate to, uh, your financial reporting in that particular area. So in my, uh, reports that were provided, I did provide a list of the findings and opinions, uh, that I issued, as I mentioned previously. Uh, but first and foremost, we did issue what's called an unmodified or clean opinion on the city's financial statement. Uh, the city's financial statement is quite a lengthy document. I have it here, 237 pages of, of comprehensive information. It is, uh, a document that is submitted for achievement and excellence in financial reporting, which the city has received for, for, uh, quite a few years, well, the number of years right offhand, but it's certainly a, an excellent report that the city puts together. Uh, in the area of internal controls, we did not have any findings to report this year. In the area of the Minnesota legal compliance audit, we did have one finding to report, and that relates to, uh, 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 the collateralization of deposits that the city. Minnesota statutes requires the city to, uh, have, uh, appropriate collateral in place for your deposits to the tune of 110% of the deposit balances. Uh, we noted during our audit that, uh, the Housing and Redevelopment Authority, the HRAs, deposits, uh, uh, were not appropriately collateralized for, uh, accounts at one particular bank in the past. Um, it is important to recognize that this particular finding was, uh, immediately, uh, corrected and as of, uh, today, or actually probably previously today, a month ago, uh, this particular finding was corrected and it's no longer an item of issue. And so lastly, uh, we did provide, I mentioned, uh, the findings on the single audit of federal awards. We did not have any findings to report. Uh, um, that probably is more noteworthy this year, given the additional funding the res- the city received in the CARES Act, the coronavirus relief funds. Uh, if anybody that's been, uh, an auditor or into finance the last, uh, 12 months, you would understand that comment, the, the number of rules and the number of regulations and the changing environment as it related to the coronavirus relief funds was ever-changing. And we experienced in a lot of clients this year, uh, challenges and a number of findings in those particular categories. Uh, so for the city to not have any findings in this single audit this year is certainly, uh, uh, commendable. So, uh, in my management report, which is a document that we issue that summarizes the results of the audit, uh, you'll find a number of other areas, including, uh, s- some information regarding the responsibility of the auditor. Uh, certainly, the, uh, timing of the audit is, uh, as expected. Uh, it is a requirement for the city to submit the audit to the Office of the State Auditor by June 30th, and with the council's acceptance this evening, uh, certainly you'll meet that, uh, timing, uh, requirement. Uh, as I mentioned already, the opinions and findings, and we do provide other information that is required, uh, as part of the audit process. The second part of the audit really is the financial results. Uh, the financial results this year, uh, uh, continue to be, uh, a strong financial position in the city. We do provide information in my management report on property taxes and the trends in that area. This is just one graph you see in the PowerPoint specifically related to the trends in market values. Uh, the market value trends, uh, uh, after, uh, the lull in the economy back from 2008 to 2014 has steadily increased in the city, and you can see, uh, increasing market values throughout, uh, the last several years. What that means, this, uh, this, uh, city is, uh, some, uh, uh, negative impacts on the tax rates. This particular presentation shows some trend lines, uh, using average tax rates at the city, and you can see for both the city, as well as other taxing entities within the city, uh, the average tax rates, uh, are, are declining, uh, oh, for the last two years. We do provide in my, uh, my management report, also information on funds, individual funds at the city. Uh, governmental funds, uh, is a, a large percentage of the city's activity. We provide information on this graph on the fund, uh, trends, uh, from one year to the next for the, the December 31st, 2020 fiscal year. Overall governmental funds, uh, fund balance, which is the equity position at the end of the year for these funds, increased about $4 million, uh, and the general fund did experience an increase in its fund balance of 2.5 million roughly. A portion of that, uh, was related to some of the transfers in, uh, to that particular fund in the year. You'll also see that there was an increase in these funds related to some debt service refunding bonds, which carried over from one year to the next, uh, increasing fund balance, which will decline in the future once those refunding bonds are refunded. We also see a decline in capital project, project funds, which can go up and down from year to year depending on, on the issuance of debt or the timing of projects, uh, um, from one year to the next. So certainly no concern in that decline, just an item of note. In my report, we also provide some trend lines in the, the general funds financial position. You can see here, as I mentioned, the general funds financial position is consistent and strong, uh, uh, from one year to the next in, in, is shown in this particular graph. The city's fund balance is, uh, guided by a policy which strives to, uh, maintain a fund balance of, of anywhere between 35 to 40% of the following year's budgeted revenues and expenses. At the end of this particular audit year, that particular percentage is 49.2%. Uh, so you can see certainly the strong financial position of the city, uh, when it comes to the general fund. We also provide information and trend lines on, uh, general fund revenues and expenditures. One of the things that stands out in, for me in these particular pres- presentations is the impact of the, the pandemic on not only your city, but most cities that we're auditing this year. And you can see some of that, uh, in this particular graph, which shows general fund revenues over the past five years. The item that stands out to me the most is in the middle of the page, which shows lodging and, and admissions taxes the city collects. Uh, you can see the purple line is 20, is fiscal 2020, which dramatically declines due to the pandemic and the, and the, uh, low, the significantly less amounts of individuals staying within the lodging in the city of Bloomington. Uh, you can also see some other particular areas here that were impacted, uh, this past year, in particular, the, the property tax levy, which was approved appropriately by the city council. In the expenditure area, you're also seeing some of the impacts of the pandemic on services as well. In particular, uh, you can see the impact on parks of recreation. A number of programming, programs were, uh, uh, not continued due to the pandemic. You can see some of the expenditure declines in that particular area. Public Works was also affected by that as some of the projects that were anticipated, uh, were delayed, uh, until, uh, future dates. Uh, in my management report, we also touch on the enterprise funds of the city, which are a significant portion of the overall activities within the city. They include, uh, uh, funds such as the water and wastewater utility funds, stormwater utilities and, and recreational facilities, uh, within, within the city. Overall, those particular enterprise funds equity position improved about 3.5 million in 2020. And you can see the very positive, uh, uh, impact of, on equity position in both the water funds and stormwater funds as portrayed here. Uh, you can also see in that particular presentation, the negative impact the COVID environment had on the recreational facilities, on the number of facilities, uh, uh, were temporarily shut down during the pandemic. Uh, uh, and you can see the impact on those particular equity positions as a result of that. This particular graph shows some trend lines in the water sewer funds, the water wastewater utility funds, excuse me. Uh, I like to focus on the green line, which is the op income, uh, and loss before depreciation. And you can see some very positive, uh, trend lines there as you look at, uh, the positive reflection on operations. Uh, we also have a graph here for the stormwater utility funds. This particular fund, uh, did also have very positive, uh, financial results for the year, including, uh, increases in, in revenues due to some, uh, increases in rates in this particular fund. Um, lastly, I'll cover the recreational facilities because it does reflect on some of the impact the pandemic does have on the city. And you can see the impact on operations when you look at the income before depreciation, which in this case is the baseline. Uh, some of the declines in the overall, uh, 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 income as a result of the pandemic is certainly reflected on this graph. Uh, so lastly, uh, uh, my management report does, uh, touch on a number of other areas, including providing information on other government-wide financial data. We do provide information on legislation that impacts the city, as well as accounting and auditing updates. Probably the most noteworthy one is on leases. There's a lease standard that's going to be changing, uh, coming in the next fiscal year for the city. So in summary, I was able to issue a clean opinion on the city's financial statements. They did issue, uh, uh, and will be issuing a certificate of achievement in excellence, for excellence in, uh, financial reporting. We hope that the city receives that, we anticipate that. I mentioned the one finding that was reported this past year, and as I also mentioned, that particular finding has already been corrected by the city as we speak this evening. As I continue to mention, the city is in sound financial condition. And lastly, I want to reflect on that last bullet point, which is the fact, uh, around the city's assessments of its internal controls. Uh, we find as part of this audit process, the city takes the audit process very seriously. They take the audit process with, uh, uh, the respect for all those involved, including myself and well as internal individuals that are providing. But most importantly, the importance around internal controls. The city takes their financial activities very important to them, and the importance of internal controls is certainly seen in any sort of audit steps that I take as part of the process. So with that, I'm going to stop sharing my screen and open it up to any questions that you might have for me about my presentation or any information that was provided, uh, to the council, uh.
Thank you, Mr. Eikten. Council, any questions? And, uh, council members Loman, Beloga, and Nelson, if, uh, if I don't see you and you have a question, please do speak up. We've got a lot of screens open right now, so please let me know. Council, any questions? Council member, council member Nelson?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Um, I think I have two questions. Uh, one, we did have the one thing that was found, and I think, uh, in my few years on the council, that's only the second time that the auditor has found an issue. Um, and I know the last time we did it had something to do with appointing a certain person, uh, to a certain position, and we, uh, made sure to change our practices so that it happened at the beginning of the year with a bunch of other appointments that we do that are required by, by law. And so my question on this is, we found this issue, got corrected, that's fantastic, um, that it got corrected, not that we found it, that it got corrected. Any changes in practices or procedures to just make sure that we don't have this issue again?
Mr. Eikten or Ms. Economy Scholler?
Mayor and Council, in this particular instance, um, it had to do with the different financing structure of, um, where we had anticipated, um, the banking institution that we were working with would have put the funds in an investment instrument versus in just a money market. And with the combination of where they had the dollars of $275,000, um, all it was, all of that was liquid versus in an instrument in liquid. So as we're moving through each of these future transactions where we're moving funds around between the HRA, the city, and the banking, we will take extra care in the future to ensure that there is collateral for everything that we're doing in the future.
Thank you. Um, and then my last question, um, there was some information about the water funds and that they performed well, I think was kind of the phrasing of it. Um, and I know there are concerns within the community about the water rates, you know, I think all of us council members and the mayor probably hear about that. Um, it, maybe this is more of a question for the city manager, but can you explain the strategy behind increasing those funds, um, due to the anticipated, uh, near and long-term costs?
Uh, Mr. Verbrugge here, or Mrs. Economy Scholler, who wants to take that one?
Let the CFO go first, and then I'll jump in as necessary.
Ms. Economy Scholler?
Mayor and Council, when we look at those funds, um, I believe Jim, uh, identified it a- as, um, the net reserves increased or the net, um, increased, but in general, they cut their expenditures, they also had less revenue, and so they did end much more positive than was, uh, anticipated, so that is a reflection of what was in those graphs. So 2020, as we budgeted for 2020 and 2019, and as we're coming into 2021, there still is a great deal of need for those capital infrastructures for you, their utility funds. So bill- So building those reserves for when we need to put those capital projects in place, you know, saving for when we need to spend, still a necessary piece that we need to do in the future.
Great, thank you. And that's really the part that I want the community to recognize is there's a strategy. We have a lot of infrastructure under, under our roads and into our buildings and things like that, that we're going to have a significant expenses in the future. And, you know, we're planfully saving to sort of mute that impact to the community as we go forward. So thank you for the explanation.
Thank you, Councilmember Nelson. Councilmembers, anything else? Councilmember Loman?
Mayor, you know, I think we can't let this time pass. You know, look, I look at this one slide here, and it says the city is in sound financial condition. Given what we've gone through over the past year, I think we can't not stress that enough with it. We need to thank our staff for their very hard work over this period of time. I'm not sure how many other institutions are structured or set up this way. Also want to thank the audit team for what they've been able to discover and do that, but I just want to make sure that folks understand when you look at this, this is quite impressive. And the number of years that we've had of excellence in financial reporting really needs to be commended. And I would just want to thank staff for their hard work for what they've done with that. Mayor, I know you agree with me on that.
Absolutely, Councilmember Loman. Thank you for bringing that up. Couldn't agree more.
Mayor and council, just a reminder, as part of that positive performance for two thousand and twenty, it was a year ago when we were looking at some major property owners in Bloomington not paying their property taxes, and that eventually coming through permit revenues that came through greater than anticipated, and the CARES dollars that we were able to use. A great deal of that played a good part of where we landed so nice and strongly for twenty-twenty.
Council, anything final? No further questions or comments. Council, I look for a motion to accept our, the city's comprehensive annual financial report for the calendar year twenty-twenty. So moved? Second, we have a motion by Councilmember Coulter and a second by Councilmember Martin to accept the city's comprehensive annual financial report for calendar year twenty-twenty. There is no further council discussion. Ms. Christensen?
Thank you. Beloga?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries seven-zero. Well, thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Economy Sholler and your team, your entire team, working on this. Outstanding work once again this year, and thank you to Mr. Eikten for the work that you put in and the presentation today and our audit, and we'll see you again about this time next year.
Thank you.
Very good. Thanks much. We'll move on to item five-point-two, which is an update from our Racial Equity Strategic Planning Committee, and we have our Racial Equity Coordinator Faith Jackson bringing this forward. I think she's got a couple of guest presenters as well. This is the third of our progress reports highlighting the work of the Racial Equity Strategic Planning Committee. Good evening, Ms. Jackson, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Happy to be here this evening and present an update on the work of the Racial Equity Strategic Planning Committee. I have with me tonight as a guest presenter Rashima Davis, who is a co-facilitator from the YMCA Equity and Inclusion Lab. And she will be providing sort of an update on discussions to date from the Racial Equity Strategic Planning Committee and also providing the council with some updates on next steps. So I'm going to quickly turn it over to Rashima, and while she introduces herself to the council, I'll pull up a presentation that will accompany her comments tonight.
Great, thank you.
Good evening, Ms. Davis, welcome.
Good evening. Hopefully my volume is good and I'm good. All right.
Yes, it is. Thank you.
Great, thank you. As Faith said, my name is Rashima Davis, and I serve as a senior consultant with the YMCA of the North and specifically helping our United Health Group Equity Innovation Center. And we've had the privilege of working with Faith and other city employees and especially community, most importantly, community members as a part of this task force. As you've heard, I believe it was a few weeks ago from our last report, so this is just an update in terms of where we are. So let's just go ahead and jump right in. Thank you, Faith. So I just want to give you a quick overview and a reminder around what our strategic planning process is. So we began this process which we call empathy, where we're doing a deep dive to, into the strengths and opportunities and gaps and experiences. So it's important that the community connects with the work that is happening. We spent time defining that work, and we had some speakers come in, which I'm going to share with you in a couple of slides, really do an overview of the five domains that we focused on as a committee. The third step is ideation. That is where brainstorming happens, where we create a large number of creative, innovative ideas as well. And then moving to prototyping, which basically is, let's make a model about how this is going to work for your community. And again, the input is from community members, and I cannot stress that enough. And then finally, testing that. It's important that the ideas come from the community and that they are tested so that we can look at larger viability. So in terms of how this went about, our brainstorming activities was around utilizing over a course of several meetings. And I'm just going to share with you our five presenters and what themes came out from that. So in terms of our neighborhood and built environment, we had Erica Coleman from the city of Bloomington, the HRA director, and she gave a wonderful presentation about, in terms of housing, and really educated the participants on the committee in terms of how our, our community is dealing with some issues in terms of, you know, mortgages and home access, specifically BIPOC individuals, that is, Black, Indigenous, and people of color. She went over some financial and funding opportunities, and we discussed, we had some tough conversation around racial issues and wage practices as well. Then in terms of our next slide, thank you, we discussed access to quality healthcare. We had Julie Rolston Oki, Aoki, the Director of Healthy Eating and Active Living Programs at Mitchell-Hamlin Public Health Law Center. Again, a great educational presentation where our community, when we went into our small groups and we were brainstorming, the themes that came out of that presentation were around, how can we attack and address food insecurities in low-income areas? And representation of BIPOC individuals in medical and higher education is so needed, and provisions for public health programs as well. So that came to the rose to the top as far as some themes from the community. Next slide, Faith? Thank you. And then economic stability, we had the honor and privilege of having Twana Black from the Center of Economic Inclusion, and she, she too, again, gave a great presentation, educated the committee on themes around economics, including the importance of data. The committee spent a lot of time talking about data. How do we get accurate data so that important and relevant decisions can be made for all in the community? We also spent time talking about housing and homeownership opportunities, and most importantly, communication with the community. How does this happen in terms of what's needed for economic stability for all community members? Then we move to accessing quality education. This is the fourth domain that we spent time on as a committee, and we had Dina Wade Ardlie from the BPS Office in Educational Equity. And the themes there for education, as you can see, really pointed to student support, increasing the collaboration, collaboration with the city and schools, opportunities for more administrators and teachers, teachers of color to be in, in the schools, funding support and partners for college pathways, and training on implicit bias as well. Again, I wanted to stress and will continue to stress in my presentation, this comes directly from our, our community committee members as well. So this is not the why coming up with these, these themes, this is directly from those that are participating and being a part of the community, a committee. And our final slide, where we spent time on social and community context, we have a presenter from the Center for Policing Equity. Lots of themes coming up from this presentation as well, and you can see there that the themes ranged. But one thing that I want to point out, I'm not going to read all of them, but one thing that I really want to point out is that we'd also talked about immigrant populations and, and also some health strategies around mental, mental illness. And so the community committee members spent some real great quality time talking and really trying to brainstorm about what's going to work for the city of Bloomington as it looks at its racial equity strategic plan. Next slide. All right, small type there, but I'm just going to talk high level. We are excited because we have moved from the ideation to prototyping, and on July twenty-ninth and, I'm sorry, June twenty-ninth and July thirteenth, our groups are going to come together and we're going to spend three hours. Each, each community committee member selected one of the five domains to spend time on and play prototype some solutions. And so we're going to come together those two dates, and during those three hours, really spend time doing a deeper dive, creating prototypes, challenging each other for relevant and appropriate solutions as well. Next slide. So what does that all mean? When you come and bring everything together, you ideate and you prototype, this is really a part of what we call our human, human system design process. And so we're going to be challenging committee members within our time together on the twenty-ninth and also June twenty-ninth and also on July thirteenth to answer these three questions. What does success look like if you are widely successful? We have come off of a year that just has been different from, for everyone. And so we're going to, we really want to promote dreaming, you know, and really thinking about what success will look like, and then what will be true in five years, ten years. And I know that's so hard for some folks to dream that far, but we're going to challenge people to do that during our prototyping sessions together and asking them where do they start as well. So that's a part of the human systems design process is thinking about being widely, widely successful as well. And I think, oh, one more slide here. So just talking about our community engagement process, we are networking, offering opportunities for committee members to share their work with their networks and to include other Bloomington residents as well. And we also want to generate some action. So that means partnering with communication and COED liaisons to actively engage community members through online and in-person processing for collecting data. So that whole sentence to say, there's a website, and I know Faith's going to talk about it before I finish my presentation, but we want to hear from you. We want to hear from the community, and this is not a closed process. So if you didn't get a chance to be on a part of the committee, then we have, the city of Bloomington has a website where we are encouraging people to, to share their comments and, and their ideas as well, because it takes all of us to create the type of communities we all want to live, work, and thrive in as well. So I think that is my last official slide. That's my contact information. I am also filling in for Dr. Hedy Lamar-Wall. She is our Chief Social Responsibility Officer. I believe she presented at our last, our time, last time in, in front of you all. But hopefully, I covered everything that, that makes sense, and if you have any questions, I am more than happy to answer those. And, and Faith, if I missed anything, please do add.
Well, thank you. Thanks so much for that presentation. If we could put the presentation back up just for a second and go back to the slide that showed the city of Bloomington and then the different pieces around it, because I wanted to, to make clear and emphasize that this, that this planning process is, looks to address all of the different pieces that were there, whether it was the faith communities, the business community, and so on, but also to, to point out pretty clearly, yes, that's exactly, also to point out that all of those different cubes are represented on the planning committee as well. I mean, these are all part of the Bloomington committee. We have representatives from all these different groups within the city of Bloomington who are part of this as well. And I know that that wasn't necessarily a question, and I apologize for that, but I did want to make that, that clear, that this wasn't just idealistic, that we're, we're trying to address all of these different pieces, but these folks are involved in this planning committee as well.
Yes. Thank you for that, that confirmation.
Thank you. Council questions? Councilmember Coulter?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to hope that I don't cause too much feedback here with my iPad, but I am curious if you could talk a little bit about, a little bit more about the presentation that Ms. Coleman gave on housing issues in particular. And I tried to find it on my phone and I couldn't, but I was reading an article today about the, the real extent of the homeownership gap. And I know pathways to homeownership is, is increased homeownership is something this council is very interested in. And so I'm wondering if you could talk just a little bit more about what that conversation was like and, and kind of what, what ideas or, or resources kind of came forward in that conversation?
Certainly, and Faith, let me know if I missed anything. In terms of the presentation, we, she spent twenty, thirty minutes with us and talked about several, started with the history first. So really spent more of a deeper dive talking about the history of how inequities existed. And then in terms of bringing it forward, the resources included her office, but also encouraging, encouraging community members to educate themselves as well in terms of any type of ideas that came out of that. That's what we're going to be looking at on June twenty-ninth and July thirteenth. All of our groups will come together with all presentations, including the housing presentation, and do even more of a deeper dive into what types of ideas can come up with that. Today's presentation was just those high-level themes that people are talking about, but when we get together on June twenty-ninth and July thirteenth, we will do more of a deeper dive on specific ideas and, and next steps.
Well, I look forward to hearing about that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Council, additional questions? Councilmember Martin?
Thank you very much, Mayor. So later on in tonight's agenda, we've got a next step in terms of our larger strategic planning efforts that are going on, core planning team involved, things like that. Are we envisioning some of the, the prototyping and the products coming out of this group will be used as a lens to inform kind of that broader strategic planning work? Or how do these two areas kind of reinforce each other?
Faith, I think that's a question for you. Thank you, Rashima.
Ms. Jackson?
Mayor, Councilmember Martin, yes, we do want to use the work that's coming from this Racial Equity Strategic Planning Committee to help inform the larger community planning that will be happening in the fall. We would like to have the report before the council in late August, early September, and we believe that we will meet that deadline. I'm looking at Rashima, she's speaking right now. And that'll be right around the time that the community-based strategic planning process will be kicking off, and so we think we'll be able to inform that work.
Gotcha, thank you. Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick question on the housing issue. Is there any engagement going on with organizations like the Federal Reserve or Housing Finance or mortgage bankers or anything like that to look at some of the challenges of financing projects or new homeownership type things? I know that the Federal Reserve in particular has done some interesting research in that area, and, and there may be some other groups that can help find solutions.
There is not a person from, representative from the groups that you There is not, um, a person from, representative from the groups that you have listed, but we can certainly, um, see if that's, uh, something we can reach out to. Uh, again, our first meeting is not until June 29th, so we have some time. Uh, and then our next meeting is Ju- July 13th, so we could definitely look into that.
And I'll just add quickly, uh, to that, Mayor and Councilmember Nelson, that we do have a representative from U.S. Bank on the committee. And they have, uh, as a component of their work, like mortgage strategies and things like that. And so, we've had discussions about what those collaborations will look like. Uh, that person is sitting on the Economic Stability Small Group Committee, uh, but those are closely related with the neighborhood and built environment. So, we'll be sharing those resources with the group as well. Um, and just echoing what Resema said, that we'll, we can make those resources available to committee members as they continue to prototype.
Um, my second question is for, uh, people in the community or council members that are interested in sort of watching this process play out. Um, are there ways to engage and follow it? Um, or is any of this, um, live televised or meetings people can attend and watch? Or how is that working?
I was, I'm sorry. My apologies. I was looking at Faith to answer some of the logistics. Um, but in terms of June 20, I'll speak to June 29th and July 13th. Um, those are specific, uh, community, um, member meetings, but, um, we will make sure that the, um, information for those meetings are included or made public, I would think. Um, we're still welcoming all content, uh, comments as well. Because prototyping, the more diverse ideas you have, the better, um, as well. So, we certainly, uh, welcome that. What I do want to, um, to ask Faith to answer the question around like how that would work with your communication infrastructure, um, as well.
Thank you for that, Resema. Uh, adding on what Resema said, so Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, we, uh, do, we'll have those closed sessions for committee members, but we have lots of opportunities for the broader community to engage in the prototype and process. So, we do have, uh, racial equity strategic planning committee page on the Let's Talk Bloomington site. Uh, that site has been up and running for the last three or four months and we're collecting some ideas there. Also, we have a webpage for the Strategic Planning Committee on the city's website. And so, we're providing updates on the committee's work as there. The presentation that we presented tonight and other sort of summaries of the work will be available there. Um, after the subcommittees have developed sort of like their key actions for the work that they want to move forward, we'll go through a lengthy process of presenting those key strategies to the community, both in online and in-person engagement opportunities so that we can get feedback on what the committee, uh, has developed before we ultimately bring it to the council. Um, and we can, I'll, I'll include some of this information in a one weekly, just a, a link to the Let's Talk Bloomington page and the webpage and things like that. So, that if you want to share with your constituents, those opportunities will be available.
All right. My last question, um, shifting gears from, from that is, um, regarding policing. And, uh, if you were on for our public comments, you probably heard that we're getting feedback from the, uh, residents of Bloomington, um, with a diversity of opinions on what needs to be done, where we're at, um, how we support our, uh, excellent police department, um, how we make changes that are necessary. And so, I'm just kind of wondering, as you go through this process, what your role will be, how you're, uh, engaged in those conversations? And, uh, I just want to say that one of the reasons that I'm particularly proud of our police department is they're willing to have these conversations, willing to make changes, have been doing that for a while and, but I, I want to make sure and I understand what your role in those will be.
Ms. Jackson.
I'm sorry, did I interrupt you?
No, please, go ahead.
Assistant Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, uh, thank you for providing that summary. My role, um, as it relates to moving this work forward is of being available for the Strategic Planning Committee and providing of the resources and hopefully we'll sort of come up with ideas for how we can move things forward within that context. Uh, but that's just one component of the work. So, you know, as you may recall, we have racial equity action teams for most of all of our departments in the city of Bloomington. Our police department has a racial equity action team. And so, that group in and of itself has already, has a list of strategies for things that they want to do to increase equity within the police department. Um, and then within that, our, uh, police chief and others are continuing to do work to move racial equity forward within a policing context. So, the work of the Strategic Planning Committee, um, is just one component of the work that we're doing to increase equity and inclusion and make that a priority within policing. We'll hear from the Police Racial Equity Action Team, uh, later in the summer, either at the end of July or early August. So, you'll hear about some of the great work that they're doing to move these issues forward. And I am working closely with all of these groups to make sure that they have the resources needed, uh, to help develop strategies and also supporting them and implementing those strategies.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your time this evening. Thank you for the update.
Great. Thank you.
Counsel, anything additional? Counsel member Carter, you're part of the committee. Anything to add?
You know, it's funny. I was about to try to raise my hand. Um, you know, I just wanted to say that, um, it's really been exciting being part of this process. Uh, there are dozens of people involved from our community, from across sectors and obviously a really diverse representation of our community. And every single meeting has been very well attended. It's been really energizing and people are really excited to do this work together. And so, I really want to applaud Ms. Jackson and Ms. Davis and all the other facilitators and presenters that have been involved. Lots of really good information and education. And, uh, you know, our community members have ideas. They really do. So, it'll be really exciting to bring those forward.
Counsel, anything else? Counsel member Beloga, I saw you unmuted. Did, did, were you looking to speak on this?
Uh, sorry. I didn't realize.
Just trying to be proactive. My bad. Uh, Ms. Jackson, when will we hear the, the next update from your committee?
Yeah, well, see, we'll be back in front of the council sometime in the next two to three weeks, um, to give updates on what the community engagement opportunities will look like. And then after that, we'll be back presenting some of the ideas that we heard from those small groups. Uh, I'll also be providing some updates via one weekly, um, over the next several weeks to make sure that the council has all the information that they need.
Very good. Thank you. Well, if there's nothing else, thank you much. Ms. Davis, thank you for your time this evening. Thanks for the presentation. Ms. Jackson, thank you as always. Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
We'll move on to item 5.3 on our agenda, which is our only proclamation of this evening and is a proclamation for, uh, the Juneteenth celebration. And as I'm sure you know, uh, June 19th is recognized as the end of chattel slavery in the United States. It has, uh, specific meaning and it's referred to as Juneteenth, combining the words June and 19th and has been celebrated in the African-American community for more than 150 years. And here is our proclamation. Juneteenth Proclamation, June 19th, 2021. Whereas the year 1619 represents a landmark in the long history of slavery in European colonies and the beginning stages of what would become the institution of chattel slavery in America. And whereas the forced migration and subsequent enslavement of Africans in America was integral to establishing the United States as a world economic power. And whereas slavery emerged as a national institution and directly influenced the economies and the wealth of both northern and southern states. Whereas President Abraham Lincoln issued the Emancipation Proclamation effective January 1st, 1863, freeing the slaves in the South, southern slave owners ignored that order. And on June 19th, 1865, Union soldiers arrived in Galveston, Texas, and enforced the president's order freeing the slaves two and a half years after it was first decreed. And whereas through other systems of oppression such as sharecropping, Jim Crow, redlining and mass incarceration, the disenfranchi- disenfranchisement of black bodies continued past slavery and persists to this day. And whereas despite those grievous hardships, African-Americans, both during periods of enslavement and still today, make significant contributions to every segment of American society. And whereas Juneteenth is recognized as the end of chattel slavery in the United States and has a special meaning to African-Americans and is called Juneteenth, combining the words June and 19th and has been celebrated by the African-American community for over 150 years. And whereas the full promise of that day is yet unrealized and therefore Juneteenth also serves as a reminder of the work yet to come that will be necessary in order to ensure a more equitable world for future generations. And whereas the city of Bloomington recognizes and affirms the value of black lives and the immeasurable contributions of African-Americans to this country and this city. Now therefore, I, Tim Bussie, Mayor of the city of Bloomington, do hereby proclaim June 19th, 2021 as Juneteenth in the city of Bloomington, Minnesota, and urge all citizens to become more aware of the significance of this celebration in African-American history and continue to work toward racial equity and realization of the full promise of emancipation, signed this day, the 14th of June, 2021. So, I think this is, uh, I believe this is the first time we've issued a Juneteenth proclamation. And so, uh, we will be recognizing June 19th. And, uh, it will also be, we will be displaying the Juneteenth flag at city facilities the week of June 18th through the 25th in recognition of the weekend of the holiday. So, that is our Juneteenth proclamation and takes us to item 5.4, which is an update on our strategic plan and mission moments. Mr. Verbrugge.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. Earlier this year, city council had, uh, indicated that it would be, uh, good to have more frequent updates on our strategic plan and the progress, uh, of the work being done to support it. Uh, and especially to do that as a public forum, like the city council meeting, so that the residents could, uh, follow along as well. We do provide, uh, semi-regular reports to the city council members, but we don't too often talk about it with, uh, our residents. So, uh, we have scheduled that we will be here once a month, uh, providing updates on our strategic plan. This is the first of those, what we're calling mission moments, uh, that we're going to present. And, uh, this evening, we have from our Community Outreach and Engagement Division, uh, Tracy Smith and Amanda Crombie. Uh, they're going to be talking about, uh, community engagement and especially the work that the COED division is doing, uh, to build that muscle tissue in the city uh, and to also make sure that our community is aware of, uh, the approaches that we're taking for community engagement and what they can expect going forward. So, with that, I will turn it over to Tracy and Amanda.
Good evening.
Thank you.
Good evening. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Bussie. Yes, thank you. Um, I'm going to share my screen. Uh, is my screen visible?
It is visible. You are good to go.
All right. Great. Well, thank you, Mayor Bussie and council members for having Amanda and I here this evening. Um, we are here as, uh, city manager Verbrugge said, to provide an update on work in the strategic, um, priority of engagement and transparency. Earliest, earlier this year, the Community Outreach and Engagement Division staff, um, COED, attended a 36-hour, two-part training from the International Association of Public Participation, which you will hear us refer to as IAP2. The IAP2 model is recognized and practiced in a variety of sectors, both nationally and internationally, and is well-respected as a best practice for public participation and engagement. We will share our definition of engagement and how transparency ties into public participation. Amanda will walk us through driving forces of the core values, the code of ethics and the work behind it. Uh, and then we'll have some time for questions. Uh, after Amanda's done, I will review the IAP2 spectrum of public participation in the process. So, Amanda.
All right. Thanks, Tracy. Good evening, Mayor and council members. Um, so, what is it that drives our very small COED team to get up, show up and step up every day? It's four very simple words: involving community, influencing greatness. We want to make a positive difference in the Bloomington community with the people of Bloomington. We know that we can do this by being bold and innovative in the public participation process and not letting fear of failure or pushback from propelling us forward. By incorporating the IAP2 model into the organization, we will live our mission, involving community, influencing greatness, while also supporting the city council's strategic priorities of equity and inclusion, engagement and transparency and community image. Next, please. So, COED has adopted the core values and code of ethics from the IAP2 framework and will be rolling these same standards out for all public participation. Core values are how we do things and constitute professional standards and best practices of public participation. There are seven core values in the IAP2 process, which are listed on your screen. All seven principles are important, but due to time, we like to highlight values one and seven for tonight. Value one reads, "Public participation is based on the belief that those who are affected by a decision have a right to be involved in the decision-making process." Where their involvement falls on the IAP2 spectrum, consult, involve, collaborate or empower, which Tracy will talk, um, further later on, will depend on you and the parameters you set out. This is where COED's training and expertise can help in the design process. Value seven reads, "Public participation communicates to the participants how their input affected the decision." It is important that we close the loop. We need to relay back to the participants in clear and concise language how their input affected this, this decision made. More importantly, if we did not use their input, we need to explain why. This speaks to transparency, but also respect for people's time and involvement. This is how we build trust. Richard Edelman, president and CEO of a leading global communications marketing firm, once said, "Trust in our institutions and their license to operate is no longer automatically granted on the basis of hierarchy or title. Rather, in today's world, trust must be earned. So, this takes time, commitment and resources." Next, please. The code of ethics speaks to the actions of professionals like ourselves involved in public participation. The 10 principles are listed on your screen. The code of ethics recognizes that we will advocate for public participation process and will not advocate for a particular interest, party or project outcome. And we will ensure that all commitments made to the public, including those made by the decision-maker, are made in good faith and communicated back to stakeholders involved.
You've likely seen the IAP2 spectrum before, as you see it here on the screen. With our driving forces, values and code of ethics in mind, let's walk through the public participation spectrum. This illustration was designed with the Bloomington public represented in orange and the city represented in blue. As we move from left to right, the spectrum demonstrates an increasing level of public impact, the orange in decision-making and problem-solving. It is important to keep in mind, this is a spectrum and projects may fall on any individual or multiple levels within this spectrum. This framework fits nicely into the city's project management process, where engagement is one of the key areas to be reviewed in new projects. To determine the level of engagement, if any, we ask ourselves two key questions. Is this project, in this project, what is the problem being addressed or the decision to be made? And once we understand this, we can ask, can the public contribute to the decision? And if they can, what is the public's role? To engage effectively, it is important to understand the values that drive the decision or question of the project versus any particular position on the subject. For example, a position would be, "Bloomington needs a roundabout at corner XYZ." Leading engagement efforts with values would say, "At corner XYZ, we value safety for motorists, cyclists and pedestrians, enhancing sight views and ensuring the flow of traffic is within speed limits." And then we would ask, "What traffic flow options would allow us to meet these values?" As we look at some examples along the spectrum, keep in mind the difference between shared ownership and buy-in. In shared ownership, public participation is key to the decision. In buy-in, the, the decision has been made without public participation. Both have a place in understanding the difference. And understanding the difference is important to developing effective part, public participation. So, let's look at some examples along the spectrum, starting on the left with inform. In inform, while this is on the public participation spectrum, you can see by the color of the icon, it's just blue, representing the city, um, representing just the city. In this step, it's really outreach instead of engagement. The city is sharing key information. An example would be the mayor declaring a state of emergency in the city of Bloomington due to a pandemic. This is a situation where action needs to be taken immediately and time and the situation does not allow for public participation. Next on the spectrum is consult. Here we start to ask the public for their input. Staff and council listen to the input and provide feedback based on how the in, um, input impacts the decision. An example here is the Let's Talk Bloomington. An example here is the Let's Talk Bloomington page survey to determine a theme for the 2022 Pride Art exhibit. A short survey was used to allow the public to provide their input on one of three theme ideas. In the middle of the spectrum is involve. At this stage, the input is more reflective of a dialogue and is reflective of the public's ideas and concerns. The Lindell Avenue retrofit workshops in 2019 and early 2020 reflect the involve stage, first at the sports page and then at the Cloverleaf Center. These demonstrate this level. Early public engagement formed and then were reflected in alternatives for the Lindell Avenue design and reported back to the council and the public at each step of the process. In this setting, the ultimate decision still lies with the city. However, the public should see a reflection of their ideas and concerns addressed in the final outcome. At the next step along the spectrum, we have collaborate. This is a common word in partnerships, and it's important here we define collaboration for the sake of public participation. At this level of the spectrum, the public's ideas are included in the decisions as much as possible. A great example that we have used here in Bloomington is last year's Community Budget Advisory Committee, the Cbat Committee. Here, members of the community were appointed by council in charge to make recommendations directly to the council regarding the city's 2021 budget. And finally, on the spectrum, we have empower. Here, the city, the commitment is that the city will implement what the public decides. Two examples, recent examples of this are the voting on ranked choice voting and garbage collection. So how does the spectrum relate to strategic priority of transparency? Amanda talked about that a little bit. Along the spectrum, at the bottom, you see the promise to the public. Allowing time for public participation where appropriate and clearly stating this promise to the public. On the front end, we define the channels of communication needed throughout the process, project process, and at the close of the engagement. This process allows for transparency of the project in public participation. Coed has shared these driving forces, values, ethics, and spectrum with the executive leadership team. Soon, we will be training city staff to ensure consistent process of public participation in Bloomington. And at this time, we ask if you have any questions.
Council questions? I am not hearing any, and I do want to say, I mean, I appreciate the work that has been done, the intentional work by our coed committee regarding this issue. We really have made it intentional and very structured and very definite, the different steps are going to take place and what we're expecting, what we hope to lay out is we, we hope to do when we lay out a project and/or a policy issue or a question. And I appreciate to hear it presented in that way because it makes it pretty simple, how we reach through the steps, how we work through the steps and we get to, from one end to the other, and the different pieces of that, how those pieces of the puzzle fit together when we are working through all of it. Mr. Verbrugge?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members, and thanks to Tracy and Amanda and their colleagues in the coed division as well. You know, one of the really important things that we're doing from a systemic and a structural perspective within the organization is making sure that our staff recognizes that the coed team is an integral part of the work that we do going forward. And I appreciate the comments they made at the front end about the expertise that comes along with engagement. Our folks in the coed division really are technical experts at this craft. I mean, there's not just art, but there's science to the public participation model. And so I appreciate the effort that they have put into becoming, you know, craftspersons at doing that. So I think more and more, you're going to see much more systematized approaches in front of the council when issues come up, being very overt about where do you want to be on the spectrum of engagement, so that we can clearly articulate to the residents what their expectation should be for us.
Any additional questions, comments on that? Council members Loman, Beloga, Nelson, speak up if need be. All right. Hearing none. Thank you. Thanks for the presentation. Looking forward to more of our, of our mission moments and the check-in with our mission and what we've got going from a practical standpoint as we try and reach, reach those goals within our mission. So thank you much. Thanks. Nice addition to the agenda, I think. We'll move on to item six on our agenda, which is our consent business. And Councilmember Beloga, you have our consent agenda tonight. Councilmember Beloga.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've heard of one hold, and are there any others? Last call. So last call for holds. Saying no more, I will move items six-one and six-two and six-four through six-six-four approval.
Second. We have a motion by Councilmember Beloga, second by Councilmember Martin for the consent agenda as stated. Hearing no further discussion by the council. Ms. Christensen.
Thank you. Beloga?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussey?
Aye. Motion carries seven-zero. So Councilmember Beloga, I believe it was item six-point-three that was held?
Six-point-seven by Councilmember Loman.
My apologies. Item six-point-seven, Councilmember Loman.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to just be sure that the, the public was aware of this work that our, that our police department is, for taking in, particularly with all the things we've got going on. The Bloomington Police Department is requesting that the city council approve a strategic relationship agreement with Police Equity and is a nonprofit organization that works with academic research institutions and individual researchers, local government, community stakeholders, and law enforcement agencies to advance the state's knowledge of the field of law enforcement and the sociological and psychological and the dynamics of law enforcement agencies and the police community relations. And I just wanted to just be sure that, that both our, our police chief and our, our equity, Ms. Jackson, were aware of this and are moving this forward on behalf of the council. And I'm not sure if they have any comments on this in addition to this, but I wanted to just throw that out there before we move for approval.
Mr. Verbrugge.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. Councilmember Loman, the answer to that question is yes, and I would specifically say that the police department has been integral in working with Center for Policing Equity to develop the parameters within this agreement for the study that they are going to conduct. This is a very well-respected and highly-regarded firm that does work around the country. And the information that was presented earlier under the Racial Equity Strategic Planning Committee topic, Ms. Davis included the information from the Center for Policing Equity presentation to that committee. So we are making sure that the, the two are walking together and will continue to do so going forward.
Thank you. Just as I would imagine, and with that being said, I'll be happy to go ahead and move the approval of the strategic relationship agreement with the Police Equity Incorporated.
Second, Beloga.
Got a motion by Councilmember Loman, a second by Councilmember Beloga to approve item six-point-seven on our consent business. Hearing no further council discussion. Ms. Christensen.
Thank you. Beloga?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussey?
Aye. Motion carries seven-zero. So Councilmember Beloga, the reason I questioned why I thought you had held item six-point-three, I thought I had heard you say items six-one and two and then six-four through six-six. That's what I thought I heard you say, and it was confirmed, actually, a couple of other folks here on the dais also heard that.
That is correct. I held item six-point-three and wanted Councilmember Loman to go first.
Oh, I, okay, thank you. Councilmember Beloga.
Thank you. With regard to item six-point-three, there's a couple of things with that. One is that I wanted the public to be aware of that we're making a capital budget request for funding to the state of Minnesota for two items, one for public health and the second one is for the Bloomington Ice Garden. These funding requests are due to the fact that these two items, public health and big, the Ice Garden, serve other communities other than just Bloomington. So they potentially qualify for funding under state bonding guidelines. For big, I think we have talked in front of the public about that in the past. With respect to public health, it's a new item, and it's one that staff is promoting, but council has not had the opportunity to have conversation with staff relative to that to today. Generally, I would have asked for this item to be held over to a future meeting date, but that's precluded by the fact that requests need to be filed within the next couple days, and we won't have another council meeting. So would ask City Manager Verbrugge for comments to help fill in the public on what the request is, the amount, and the nature of the request.
Mr. Verbrugge.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. Councilmember Beloga, the requests for state capital bonding, as Councilmember Beloga indicated, are for the Bloomington Ice Garden and for a public health facility. It is, the public health facility request is new in terms of having it on the agenda here for council approval. We haven't talked about it in a while. We have had that facility in the CIP for replacement dating back to 2018. Council will recall that we did include a space for public health within the program design of the community center when we were looking at that project back in 2019. At the time that we terminated that effort, we stopped working on public health at the same time. In light of several facts, not the least of which is the last year's pandemic, but also the fact that the public health facility is now a seventy-year-old, I'm sorry, sixty-year-old building that has long exceeded its life expectancy, has about half the space for the number of employees that are there, and is also the most energy inefficient building of any of the city facilities. We were concerned that we were missing an opportunity to look at a funding option and make sure that we're progressing in our, our physical plant replacement schedule by not submitting this request. By including public health in the, in the request to the state is not saying that absolutely this is the way that we're going to do it, but it gets our foot in the door because obviously we're talking about next legislative session, and it's going to take a while to put together the information. The, the cost is being estimated right now, I just got the update this morning. As a matter of fact, council will remember back when we were looking at the component within the community center, we were estimating it to be about fourteen million dollars. That cost is now about seventeen million dollars, largely driven not by any change in program design, but changes, you know, inflationary costs and labor and building materials. So with a, with a state capital bonding request, typically it is a fifty-fifty participation match by the local unit of government. So if we do go forward with this request as we get closer to the legislative session, we'll want to be identifying what the city's contribution would be and how we would accomplish that in the same way that we would for the Bloomington Ice Garden. We will be bringing forward conversation about our capital improvement plan in the next couple of months, especially our asset replacement schedule, because we do have a couple of other big projects on the list that council is aware of, most notably the replacement of our mechanics maintenance garage. And as council is aware, we've, we've been working at this gradual replacement schedule for a number of years now, and unfortunately, several of them are just bumping up together at the same time. So there will be more conversation for the council. This does not lock us into this one funding option. There are a couple others that we will be presenting as we go through that discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Verbrugge. Then I'll just, before I move this for approval, I'll ask if any of my colleagues have any questions or comments.
Councilmember Carter.
Thank you, Mayor. So, Mr. Verbrugge, since public health serves Edina and Richfield, what, if any, will be their level of participation in the discussions around bonding?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. Councilmember Carter, we have not approached Richfield and Edina regarding contributions towards the physical project. The financial arrangement that we have with them related to public health is essentially contractual in nature for the service we provide to the cities. We don't and have not included the overhead, as it were, for buildings and that type of thing as part of the project. It is a regional project. I expect that it is going to be well-received because of the fact that it is serving three communities with, you know, about a hundred and eighty thousand people, and I expect it will score well from that regional perspective. As we get into deeper discussions with the council, that's certainly an issue that we can have more conversation about if there should be some, some expectation of other participation.
Councilmember Coulter.
Thank you, Mayor. Just picking up on that point, I, you know, I think certainly the public health facility more than meets the criteria as far as a regional asset, and I would just encourage staff to, you know, as these conversations move forward, engage not only the city leadership within Edina and Richfield, but the legislators elected by those cities, some of whom represent Bloomington, but some of whom do not. And I think, you know, the more folks we can, we can get on the team, the better.
Mr. Verbrugge?
Thank you. We will do. As a matter of fact, Mr. Mayor and council members, Councilmember Coulter, council members are familiar with it. Folks watching may not be familiar with the process. How this usually unfolds is that the governor's office and primarily the staff at Minnesota Management and Budget reviews all of the requests for capital bonding. They will schedule meetings with requesters to understand the projects, and then they'll go through their own process of determining what the governor will support. That's a separate process from what happens with the legislature, but often legislators will not advance a project if it doesn't have the governor's support. So at the same time that we will be working with the administrative side of the state review, we will also be working with our legislators to make sure that they understand the project and that we have support for it moving forward, and then it will work its way through the standard legislative process and the, the capital investment committees.
Any additional questions?
Mr. Mayor, seeing no additional questions, I will then move item six-point-three for approval.
Second. Got a motion by Councilmember Beloga, second by Councilmember Coulter to approve item six-point-three on our consent business. Hearing no further council discussion on this matter. Ms. Christensen.
Thank you. Beloga?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussey?
Aye. Motion carries seven-zero. Moving on to item seven on our agenda, which is our hearings, resolutions, and ordinances. We do have six public hearings this evening and a discussion on a seventh one, the ordinance of the Stormwater Pond duration permit code amendments. And so we will have plenty of options and opportunities for public input this evening. First item up is seven-point-one, which is our Park System Master Plan, which we have discussed a number of times, seen a lot of different updates, and we'll be getting the, taking the public comment on it this evening. So our Assistant Director of Parks and Park Projects, Renee Clark, is with us this evening, and I believe our Park Director, Ann Catriss, as well. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. In advance of public comment opportunity on the draft, purchase the master plan tonight, I'll highlight the plan process that got us to this point and provide a brief overview of the plan itself. Listening with me, as you mentioned, is Director Catriss and our consultant, Brad Alt. Park System Master Plan is nearing completion, a project that started about eighteen months ago. This is a document to help us make decisions about future park investments, which parks should change first, and identifies priority investments. A reminder, it's a higher-level planning document that identifies- A reminder, it's a higher level planning document that identifies needs and opportunities and not a plan for all our individual parks. This process that began in November twenty nineteen has included studies, analysis and extensive community engagement. The final plan is scheduled for adoption in August. The work plan and details of research and analysis has been discussed with city council at several meetings over the past eighteen months. The engagement plan has been purposeful and endeavored to capture a wide range of stakeholders, even as we transitioned from in-person to virtual meetings. I want to give a shout out to Amanda Crombie, who is here earlier tonight, for being very instrumental in making community connections and assisting with the implementation of the engagement activities pursuant to the IAP two, which was presented tonight. Communications to promote the engagement events, including this common opportunity tonight, have been through our city's website, a specific project website, park signs throughout the project and currently for this opportunity, the Bloomington briefing, most issues since the project started, flyers in the Sun Current that are published in Spanish and English, our social media channels and e-subscribe, including the city's YouTube channel and productions such as the Buzz and the Mayor's Minute. I'll note that the common opportunity tonight was advertised on Let's Talk Bloomington, the homepage of the city's website, the public notice section of the city's website, and through on social media and e-subscribe. Through the extensive community engagement process, these four elements for the plan have emerged as priorities: natural resources, sales and mobility, new park amenities and equity. These priorities, in addition to others, are reflected through each section of the plan. The plan branding is built on the Project Bloom website used early in the plan process. Plan has four sections: our city, our parks, the parks Bloomington has, the parks Bloomington needs, and how we get there. Starting with our city, our parks, this section includes an introduction and purpose, placing the role of parks into the overall picture of Bloomington, and includes the demographics and trends analysis. Section two, the parks Bloomington has, provides issue identification through studies and analysis, such as the level of service study, which compares Bloomington parks and amenities to national standards, and also includes the recreation program assessment, which provides a program strategy analysis, looking at program lifecycle, ages served, and a cost recovery model based on the categories of service provided and a recommended level of tax subsidy for each. Section three is moving from an understanding of what we have to the parks Bloomington needs. Section three summarizes what we heard from the community and what we learned from section two in addition to the recreation and trends analysis to propose priority park elements. Section four then describes how we get there. This section maps out the implementation approach, identifies park classifications through national recreation and park association standards, and includes a specific action plan. Over this past year, the important role of the parks play into our quality of life. We also have gained an understanding from residents how to better serve the community with our parks. Public comment will be accepted in addition to tonight through June twenty-second. The plan is anticipated to come before council for adoption then on August second. This plan will help guide decisions for park investments for the next ten-plus years. At this time, I will turn it back to the mayor for request for public comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Clark. Council, any questions from Ms. Clark about the hotline, quick overview that she gave? All right, with that, as, as I said, this is a public hearing, and we are going to open it up to public comment on the park system master plan. So if you've got a comment or something to bring forward regarding the park system master plan, please come forward to make sure, again, that everybody has an opportunity. We're going to limit it to five minutes per speaker, and we, you know, so the shot clock will be running, but I'd love to hear what you have to say about it. So please, if you have something to say, come on forward.
Hello, my name is Natalie Maroos. Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening. Welcome.
Council members and those who are on screen. Just a couple of things, looking at the park master plan and the desire that seems to be to ignore the great things that we've had in Bloomington in regards to our parks and maintaining our parks and our, also our buildings. In August nineteenth, I think, I think it was August, oh, August nineteenth, twenty twenty, we were told that the Creekside Community Center is a twenty-five thousand dollar facility built in nineteen sixty. The facility is outdated and most mechanical, plumbing, electrical and building envelope systems are in need of replacement or major renovation. I bring that up because our school buildings were also built around the same time. Valley View was built in nineteen fifty-six and Washburn was built the same year as Creekside. Those buildings have been well maintained. Those buildings have been updated and those buildings have had additions. I am wondering why Creekside has fallen into such disrepair. It seems the same thing happened with the public health building. And then also, a question that I have, or maybe it's not a question, public comment, that Bloomington used to have an ordinance that required residential subdivisions to dedicate ten percent of the land to park. And so I'm wondering if that ordinance is still in place, and if not, how that changed. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Ms. Ness. Welcome.
Thanks. Working to save Valley View Park, what I heard most often, besides city does what it wants, is that residents appreciate the parks but are concerned with the condition of the parks. I think Creekside, although not a park, reflects the concern with the condition of the parks. Residents appreciate Creekside. Unfortunately, the property has been neglected as some of our parks have been. Again, residents support our parks and Creekside, so please maintain them. It does not make sense to question or make changes to the current park master plan and how parks serve our Bloomington residents when the city has not maintained Creekside and some of its parks. Thanks.
Anyone else?
Could I get the document camera for public comment?
I, I think we could.
That'd be great. I just have, I just pulled out a little bit of the, the parks plan right there, and one of the things that I really noted looking through the parks master plan was the, this is resident input, it looks like, as far as maintaining, upgrading natural areas, maintaining parks, the play equipment, upgrading neighborhood parks and playgrounds, all rated high. And if you look at all those things, those are all outdoor kind of amenities. It looks like, obviously during Corona, coronavirus, our parks were used rather heavily. And like Sally stated, you know, I'm seeing, you know, weeds in the playground. I've talked to some of the park folk that are working in the park, and it seems like they're overstretched. We've got a lot of garbage in our parks and they're not being maintained. And you can see by this right here that, that residents are really concerned about the lack of maintenance in the outdoor parks that are, that are currently existing. And they look pretty rundown overall. And if you look down below, it says additionally, residents were asked which actions were most important to their households, and both of those two things coming at a forty-nine percent, maintaining the outdoor parks and upgrading natural areas. Now, I walk down at Nine Mile a lot with my kids. The trails are getting really beat up down there, you know, and I think you guys, if you walk down there, those trails need upgrading, you know, so I can see why residents are concerned. You know, there's almost tripping hazards down there in that area. It's a beautiful park. Moyer Park is a, is a staple of our community. So, so I think we really need to focus on the outdoor part of it. But if you look down here, it says new indoor community and rec center at twenty-three percent support. So I look at that as an indoor facility, and only twenty-three percent, it looks like, want this. And the other twenty-eight percent out of that a hundred percent there, I don't really know what that is. So I just kind of put a question there, is what, what is that outdoor? And I wanted to mention too, that the indoor rec centers are already at both of our high schools. We were sold that we can use these indoor rec, rec centers already. So we already have Kennedy and Jefferson have huge indoor rec centers. So a community center should not really rate as a high priority. So if you look at this right here, it looks like community and rec center and indoor swimming and pool aquatic center. I kind of put a little fork to those two. They come at a real high priority, a hundred percent priority in that plan. And how they come up with these top priority investment ratings is, is beyond me. Over here in the prioritization, I just want to let everybody know, I think the forefathers of Bloomington would probably roll over in their grave if they looked at this. It says, basically, it says, race, crime rate, poverty, and income level are all going to weigh into this equity prioritization index value. The founders of Bloomington, when they built the parks, I believe it was in a ten-block radius of any given house when these parks were designed and built. So I just wondered why all that racial stuff has to come into play with the, with the parks master plan. Don't think it really belongs there. I think parks should be maintained within a given neighborhood. Now, as far as, and over here, it says something about eighteen years of age. People of all, all ages use parks and trails and systems, so this equity thing kind of, kind of bothers me a little bit. The other thing, as you guys know, I'm kind of into taxes a little bit, this incremental increase that we're looking at, looks like it's, we're going from one point three million to three to four million per year. We're over doubling our, our annual, if we do an incremental increase in our parks. So that kind of concerns me. So we're looking at about eighty million down at the bottom of the screen. However, we could do a referendum and we can, oh, this one above does not include facility needs here. So that kind of, that's just park stuff, like, that they're talking, that doesn't include any facility needs. So four million a year seems like a high price tag, over doubling what we got right now. The immediate deal, you could do a referendum, it looks like, too, and we could fold the facilities along with the, the park needs in a five-year timeline, and we could fast-forward this. So I know we're talking about like low taxes, but this to me looks like it's going to be, going to be some big money. So my question is, why aren't the parks maintained right now? Are we, are we low on money? Because we seem like we got a bunch of carers money. Why are the parks in bad shape? I ask you guys that upfront here. Sally said that. Can you guys respond in public comment right now? Can you guys answer that for me?
I, I suppose we could. I think it would be better if we got you, put together a full answer for you. I, I think the bottom line is, yes, we are, we are spending on parks. My, my take would be, clearly from your comments and from the, the observations you've made and heard from others, we're not spending enough to maintain the parks.
Well, and, and I don't know what, what happened along the way. I mean, the parks used to be maintained. I'm a fifty-year resident, you know, did we, are we not taxing people enough? Is this what we're looking at? A lot of taxes going forward, and we're going to have tons of people maintaining the parks, and I just, I just don't know what happened, but the parks are.
And, and I can't, and I can't speak to the full fifty-year range, so I'm, I'm not sure.
Right.
But I think the bottom line is, I mean, it's whether it's our, our, our public health building, whether it's our parks, whether it's anything, to maintain them takes money.
Right.
And, and I mean, that's, that's the bottom line.
And I, I'm just looking at, this, this could be like double the money. And, and taxpayers, as you know, residents here, they live here, and, and we got reasonable taxes here. So I'm just kind of going to point that out. And there are some creative, I saw some of the planning here, they're trying to get creative with the, some private public partnerships and stuff, which I thought was kind of unique and good, but our group is going to start cleaning up some parks, you know, so just to let you know. So, so we're going to try to do some positive things, because I, I said, I've talked to some workers and these parks are, they're, they're in disarray. They're just not.
I, I wouldn't characterize them as in disarray. I, I agree, there are some issues and, and all, all the work that we need to put into them, again, does take money.
Yep.
And we, we have to balance.
Right.
I mean, what the needs are, whether it's public safety, public works, parks.
Right, right.
And trying to then balance how much residents are, are willing and able and, and happy to pay and taxes to, to pay for that.
Oh, yeah. Well, and look at the, if you look at the community center, you know, and I, I know you talked about centers of community, you know, we have our Creekside. I said, it's the same building that my kids go in. I hope, you know, I, I, I think the, the public is going to have a hard time swallowing the price tag of a community center. So I'm just bringing that front and forward right now, so, you know, to let you guys know. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for your comments. Others?
I'm Bren Keport, here representing the Bloomington Off-Road Cycling Alliance, and just wanted to thank you all for the inclusion of the bike parks and some portions on off-road multi-use trails and single-track trails for mountain biking. Also wanted to request a few things. There is no commitment in the plan at this time for development of mountain bike single tracks. I know there's some comment in there regarding feasibility studies and, and things of that sort, but our, our concern is that that will be put on the wayside and, and other things will be prioritized. And, and as, you know, previous commenters have noted, maintenance takes money. And, and as the Bloomington Off-Road Cycling Alliance, we are a volunteer organization that is prepared to maintain the trails and develop a community-led organization around the trail development to offset a majority of that cost. The majority of the single track in the Twin Cities is volunteer-built, maintained, and it creates a partnership with the city and the Parks Department is often utilized in those situations to keep it as, as cost-effective and user-friendly as possible. So we're just, we're looking for a commitment from the city council to actually have an action plan for development of single-track trails. Especially want to express our support for the locations of Tierney's Woods and Corridor Park. The city is fully developed, as it's been stated in the plan, but these two areas, at least from my observations, are severely underutilized. I was at Tierney's Woods for two hours this morning, it was the only car in the parking lot, even though it was a beautiful Saturday morning. And every time I pass through Corridor Park, I'm pretty much the only person on the trail there as well. So I, I would, I would say, you know, utilization of these parks should also be considered and possibly, you know, trail, trail usage counters, which I know are a thing, just to make sure that, you know, if they're going to be limited to only hiking as they are now, that they're actually being utilized and not just wasted space for the city. Also want to emphasize our environmental focus. I know there are concerns, some concerns with environmental impacts of, of single-track trails, especially with mountain biking, but we are very concerned about these things as well and are willing to partner with any environmental groups to make sure that we're doing this the correct way. We also, you know, acknowledge that a lot of these, these parks are overgrown with buckthorn already and other invasive species, and, and would like to work to clean those up as part of the, the trail development plan. Guess that's all I have.
Great. Thank you much. Others to come forward? Ms. Chaney, maybe you can make the request and see if we have anyone calling in on this topic as well.
Can you hear me, Nora?
Yes, ma'am. At the moment, no participants joined. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
At the moment, no participants joined via phone lines, so please continue.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Thanks much. Please.
Okay. Thank you. Mayor, my name is Dennis Ordall. I wasn't planning on speaking, but it is cold in here, freezing, and council members. I've been hearing a lot about the rebuilding the parks or whatever, and I know Creekside has been a headache for everybody. My main concern is, you know, Creekside is the, the small footage that Creekside is and what it could be. I think that building is built like a brick shithouse and it could handle, you know, bombing or whatever, and I think that's probably what it was designed for. I don't think a second floor would be too much put on there. But anyways, I was looking at the parks and I happened to see the, the, all the bridge that, you know, that they revamped, put all the money back into. And I remember when I was a kid going over that bridge, I remember seeing the, the water underneath it. Now you walk across the bridge and it's all cement. They kind of took away the, I don't know, the characteristics of the bridge itself. But with the parks and everything. But with the parks and everything, if you're going to rebuild them, let's rebuild them for the kids, you know, the programs. We need more park programs that the kids can be involved in and learn to grow and share and have fun doing it. And I guess that was one of my concerns is that uh I don't, I don't think we're getting the right input on what they're doing around Bloomington, because it seems to me that they're taking everything away from everybody. And it is a good place to live and learn and grow and share and have fun. And I don't want to see that go away. But I I'll sign my name and get off the podium here because it is cold.
Thank you for your comments. Others? And yes, it is cold in here.
I hope it doesn't last till two in the morning. Because I can't do that.
Good evening again, Barbara Schneider. Um, and I wasn't planning on speaking to this, but um I am very concerned that Creekside has been closed as long as it has. Uh, it served a very important purpose for the seniors of this community. Uh, it, I, from the outset, was opposed to a large community center that was going to serve all of the purposes that uh were proposed. Uh, I'm a gerontologist, so this is my specialty. And uh having one's own place to go is very important, no matter where you are in the lifespan. And there are certain security and safety issues involved in a large thing, a large uh community center that would um serve everyone. I have felt that Creekside was a wonderful place. When we first moved here, I just thought, and I wasn't a gerontologist when I moved here, uh, I thought it was wonderful that they had their own place. I thought it was kind of crummy, that it was such a dismal building. Uh, so, and I have also been involved in the um discussions about renovating aging school buildings in another community. And that community, I think, made a huge error in not listening to public input and made decisions that I don't think uh were in the best interests of the citizens of the community, as well as in the financial standing of that community. So I think that it is very important that you move on doing something with Creekside to us, to reestablish a place for the seniors of this community to gather and to do what they need to do. That's all I wanted to say about that.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Dave Clark again. Um, just a couple of questions on the methodology, and they picked up on this a little bit ago. The new indoor community recreation center showed twenty-three percent in uh, I guess it was a um residence um questionnaire or something to that nature. But then, uh, this is on page one sixty-six of the How Do We Get There uh document. But then we get to page one sixty-seven, and it's all of a sudden in a high priority. How do you get from a twenty-three percent response in a, in a citizens and a residence uh questionnaire, and all of a sudden it's number four from the top and high priority? I don't understand that. Um, indoor swimming pool and aquatic center, we've got two of them here, they're called Lifetime Fitness. You know, we should have some sort of a public partner, private uh partnership, private-public partnership um with, with existing businesses. There's no reason why City of Bloomington can't um work something out with Lifetime Fitness. And of course, we got the two high schools here as well, as well as the middle school over here, Valley View, um, and others um as well that have facilities. So there's really no need for a community recreation center, some mammoth giant structure that's going to just eat up cost and it's just going to turn into a, um, it's just going to take on a life of its own. Thank God that the last time this came up, it uh was defeated. Um, the other point that I wanted to bring up is, is on page one seventy, the increased investment. The incremental staff is proposing to increase the park CIP budget from one point three million a year to three to four million annually for twenty years. How, how in the world does that happen? How do you get those numbers? Who's coming up with this? Um, I I know what happens with group think and people get in a room together and they get all excited and they start, you know, putting together their wish lists and everything, but it's easy if you look, using OPM, other people's money. That's easy. Now, when I was growing up, my dad had a few sayings, and I'm sure they did with you too. Don't write checks you can't cash, right? Was another one. Um, you know, money doesn't grow on trees. It was funny because when he was saying money doesn't grow on trees, I imagined a tree with hundred-dollar bills pinned, you know, hanging from them, and I would just go out there and pull the hundred-dollar bills off. But um, you know, that stuck with me. Money does not grow on trees. Um, this is other people's money here. This is our money you're talking about. And so, listen, I, I take advantage of the parks. I love the parks in Bloomington. It's one of the reasons I live here, is the parks. Love the parks. And the parks need, you know, they need some attention. But to go from one point three to four million, that's over a three hundred percent increase. Has anybody here gotten a three hundred percent pay raise in the last year? Nope. You know? Have the roads gotten three hundred percent better? No. Some places, they've gotten three hundred percent worse. We increase uh public spending or public uh safety, crime keeps going up. Those are bad investments if we're going to go in the wrong way. And the same thing with, with, with our parks. Um, one point three million to three to four million, how in the world does this proposal contain those kind of numbers? It's, it's beyond me. And that really needs to be looked at. As far as I'm concerned with these kind of numbers, this proposal needs to be shelved, tabled, put back on the shelf and going back and take another stab at it. This is not acceptable to the community. It's uh too much money, there's too many questions about where the money is going to go, how the money is going to be raised, how it's going to be paid for. Um, you know, we're not flush with cash in this town. Um, these are, you know, we're middle-class people that pay taxes and, you know, we're, we're happy to pay our fair share for the values that we receive and, and uh and services. But to go from one point three a million a year to three to four million a year, that does not even address facility needs, folks, there's something wrong here. This, this does not pass the common sense test. I'm sorry. This should not be going through. So I hope the community will do our part and uh and speak up against this, because there's going to be more opportunity for public comment. As far as I'm concerned, the little I've read of this, um, it's, it's not acceptable. Um, more work needs to be done to define exactly where these increases are coming from, how they get from one point three to four million over a three hundred percent increase over twenty years. Um, and uh, and how we go from a twenty-three percent response in a survey to then the community recreation center being number four from the top. Something's wrong with this methodology. Doesn't pass the sniff test.
Clark, your time's up. Thank you much for your comments, and we'll, I'm sure, let the consultant explain their methodology and how they got to the conclusions that they came to in this whole, this whole process.
Uh, Amber Mathwig, resident of Bloomington. I first want to say that a four hundred and thirty-page council agenda that's put out on usually Wednesday, Thursday, I believe, for somebody who works full-time over the weekend, is practically impossible to read in great detail. Um, so with that, I'm going to add in that in my time here in Bloomington, I have greatly appreciated the outdoor areas. I'm glad to see that there is a long-term plan in place to be able to go. Uh, used several of them throughout the week to take my dogs out, met up with a friend the other day. We were pleasantly surprised that uh the bathrooms were very clean and cool on a hot morning so that she could relieve herself after, at the end of our kind of long walk. Um, and that it generally feels pretty safe to be out and about walking with my dogs, even if it's just, you know, me and them. And that I, as a low-income person living in Bloomington, would love to know that when I'm paying in money to a fitness facility, you know, even if it's via taxes, that that money is coming back to me by having that facility available to me. Whereas if I was paying that money into a corporation, all of it, all it's going to do is benefit a handful of shareholders for me to be paying a membership to them. So I love that idea of bringing a public access facility, um, and that I also kind of believe that public access facilities just become a little bit more stringent in safety and around harassment and discrimination that myself and many others might feel going into certain fitness facilities. Um, and I also just love seeing all, wait, I forgot where I was going with that. The last thing that I'm going to say on that is that the land was here before any of these buildings, before any of these people. If the weeds are here, the weeds are here. They were probably here first.
Thank you. Any additional comments?
I just want to make.
Thank you.
One comment.
Could we get you to state your name, please?
Yes, Carol Kramer. About Creekside, which has been here for many years. It is not only for the seniors, but it does bring together a community. There's always been a boutique where seniors have crocheted items, sewed items, and sold them to the public. It is, it has been used um to hand out food, distribute free food. I used it quite often to go and talk to the guys in the wood shop to problem-solve for me, for my home. Or could you cut this piece of wood for me because I can't? Those sorts of things. So it did bring a whole community um together. It's a shame that uh it was not maintained, but I don't believe it's too late to save it, because those old buildings are strong buildings. If you look around through the Minneapolis-St. Paul area, you know, they're good structures. They were made well. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak?
Anita Smithson, um, I'm also a Bloomington resident, and I appreciate the fact that the four-part presentation was on Let's Talk Bloomington. Um, it took me quite a few evenings to get through it all. I thought it was a really great presentation, and I'm really grateful um for, you know, sort of the look at where we've been and where we want to go. And I think that parks are a community priority, and I think you're hearing from lots of people that, that, yeah, parks are a priority and they need an investment, and I think this is a really important strategic investment to make. So I want to see this funding put towards, excuse me, I want to see our community find a way to fund our parks, to fully fund our parks. Um, you know, I have conversations with neighbors in my community and with um other parents as my kids are getting into school and are meeting other kids their ages who say, Anita, you're really in tune with what's going on. What's happening with our community center? When is that going to open? When are they going to start building that? There are a lot of people in this community who want that, and they don't even know that it's not happening. They saw it in the briefing for years, and then it just dropped off, and there wasn't a really good communication to say that we weren't going to have that. And people are asking for it. I know there's a small group of people who are probably muttering behind me because they've been muttering for most of this meeting, um, who have been saying that, you know, we don't want a community center, we don't, we don't want to spend this money, we don't want to make these investments. But there's a lot of folks in our neighborhood who just don't come to these meetings and they don't hang out on all the various social media chats, and they do want this. And we want to see this investment made in our community. I love um the fact that my neighborhood park is going, you know, was one of the ones that was drafted as possibly getting a skate park. My kids love to walk over there, would love to be able to do that. Right now, you know, it's not in the greatest shape, the playground equipment's not amazing. Um, I love that you could incorporate walking trails. I love that the presentation talked about connecting our parks within the parks and also throughout our city. Um, you know, we can't really get over to the new France Avenue uh walking path with a two-year-old, um, you know, coming along those busy roads, but we like to park in the lot that's right next to, um, it's like the Marsh Lake Playfields, the soccer fields. Um, we like to park there, and we like to walk up onto the bridge, and we will spend an hour or two looking for birds, turtles, all sorts of wildlife. And if we could safely get from our home through Tarnhill Park, you know, through Normandale Community College and over to that walking path, it would really um just give us even more in our community. So my personal experience is that, and I would like to see these investments be made, and I think there's a lot of people that would. And I think that the, the folks in co-ed are doing a really good job with um looking at ways to have conversations in community. Um, and I think that there's a lot more that we can do, because I think if you were actually like in the parks, talking to the people that use it, they would want to make these investments. And so I just really hope that this um Parks Master Plan can be implemented and that you can get that funding um from those various creative sources that were outlined in that. And, you know, I know as a tax-paying resident, I am willing to pay more to um have the parks of the future so that, you know, my kids can have the same memories that so many others here have. You know, as a little girl, my grandfather would take me biking on the Old Cedar Bridge. We would play at McAndrews Play Lot, like we, we have those memories too. And I would like to be able to build that for our kids and for the families that want to move here. So I'm asking you to absolutely adopt this plan, absolutely find a way to fund it, and I just think making sure that you're hearing from more people in the community, because I really think there's a lot of folks who want this, they just don't have time to come to these meetings and, and participate in this process, which can be a barrier for many. So, thanks.
Thank you. And on that note, to folks who don't have time necessarily to come here but do have time to call in, Ms. Chaney, could we check one more time to see if we have any callers on the line who would like to speak to this topic?
Nora?
Still, there are no participants joined via phone lines, so you may proceed.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak on this? All right, well, thank you for the public input and greatly appreciated, and we will put that all together. I would like, if we could, do we want to answer questions uh now or are we taking them to respond at a future date, Mr. Brugge?
Uh, Mr. Mayor and council members, the uh plan was to collect all of the public comment and then to respond to it in aggregate together. So uh you could see the comments submitted uh through emails and through the website and then uh through the public uh comment received this evening and then get um responses all in one place. Uh, if there is something uh particular about this evening that you want to pull a thread on, we're happy to answer those questions.
All right, thank you. So ultimately, the, the questions that you had, Mr. Clark, methodology and so on, will be rolled into the other questions that we're getting here tonight and that we've received online as well. Council, any questions? Uh, Councilmember Martin, is there anything that you would like to delve into a little bit?
Uh, just, just a kind of a quick clarification and a, and a question. I think uh in terms of some of those items before, ahead of the next meeting, methodology, things like that, the uh document I'm pretty sure lays it out in, in pretty excruciating depth, some of the data analysis that happened. I think folks tonight only had three or four pages of it, but that full document explains it pretty well. Um, and then if folks have questions then before that deadline for submitting feedback, is that Let's Talk Bloomington, Project Bloom, how should they do that online? Mr. Brugge?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. The contact info that's on the uh website for this process is the best one to go through. So I would refer people to the website and to um follow up going uh through the contact info there. Yep.
Anything else, Council? Ms. Chaney, can we make one last call? Call for callers?
Nora, can you check one more time to see if there's any callers?
There's no one here, ma'am. You may proceed.
Thank you.
Very good. Then we'll close this public comment on the Park System Master Plan and give them thanks to everyone who came forward and, and offered your opinion on this. Greatly appreciated. It will go into uh the discussion that we'll have ultimately in uh August second, I think, is when Council will take this up again for, for a final discussion on this. But I know all the information brought forward tonight and brought forward online and so on will be uh will be part of that discussion and be part of uh any modifications that may be made. Let's move, if we could, to item seven point two, a second public hearing of this evening are uh having to do with a city code amendment regarding cultural campus. Mr. Johnson from Planning is here in person. How great. Thank you for being here, Nick. Great to see you. Good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and uh members of the uh city council. And thank you, Amy. I think we'll be working together here to advance slides and whatnot. Um, given your robust agenda, I'll try and be concise in my uh presentation here. I just have a few slides for you. Uh, but the city uh of Bloomington has received a request for a privately-initiated city code amendment. Uh, this is not a development application that we receive too often, but sometimes it does come forward uh from the public. And so this application has been brought to you by uh a free hospitality group, LLC. Uh, they're hoping to establish a, a community campus in Bloomington, and the first step in order to do so, uh as they're presenting it to you, is to uh create this new use designation. to do so, as they're presenting it to you, is to create this new use designation by defining the use and designating where it would be allowed in Bloomington. So as I said, cultural campus is the use that they have brought forward to you in this privately initiated amendment. It would create the use and define it, and then where they want to establish it as a conditional use would be the FD2 zoning district, and we'll get into where that's located in the city and kind of what the characteristics of that district are. With included in their application, it does communicate that they desire to establish this use at 1701 American Boulevard East. There's also a potential contiguous parcel that they're looking at to possibly incorporate in the future. But just to be clear, any action that you're taking this evening is specific to the code amendment only. So this really just creates the pathway to submit an application further down the line should the application be approved. Next slide, please. So the definition that they've put forth before you this evening, I won't read it verbatim, but the essence of it is that the campus itself would aid in the cultural... or would assist in cultural development as a collective unit. This is really critical in the definition in that by providing a mix of uses, no single one of those uses would occupy more than 50% of the floor area of the total campus. And just to note, as it went through the Planning Commission review and discussion, there was some last-minute amendments that clarified some elements of this definition. So the one that you're seeing before you this evening does reflect the Planning Commission recommendation as well as supported by the applicant who is in attendance as well. The mix of uses that would be included in a cultural campus, these are all uses that are generally defined in our zoning code. That would include community center, art center, and office, place of assembly, event center, indoor recreation entertainment, university, makerspace, business incubator with shops and production space, restaurant, library, museum, and social service distribution facility. So this is basically providing you a large menu of uses that are already existing in the code and kind of combining them all together as options for one of the minimum three uses that could come forward as a cultural campus. And then, again, repeating back to the point about kind of last-minute amendments and things of that nature that was reviewed by the Planning Commission, an additional add from the original application was clarifying that this use as a cultural campus could include multiple buildings and could cross property lines so long as they are contiguous. And again, that does relate to their desire to potentially extend the campus, again, to that contiguous parcel. So it's very similar to a plan development. Many of the plan developments we look at in our development applications include multiple parcels, which comprise a development site. So it's a pretty similar concept. Next slide, Amy. Thanks. Yeah, thank you. So whenever we look at adding a new use or even adding an existing use to a new zoning district, what we look at is what that zoning district intent is in order to make sure that the new use matches the intent of that zoning district. The FD2 zoning district is one of our oldest zoning districts in the zoning code. It dates back to the 1960s, so it certainly has now been incorporated into Chapter 21 as part of our industrial zoning districts, but it really offers and provides for and allows a kind of a very eclectic mix of uses. It ranges widely, but the intent of it is to provide for areas for roadside business and industry sites that require a high level of access and would have a lot of potential traffic for the motoring public. And it does exclude retail businesses for the purposes of preserving that land area for industrial and other business and industry-type uses. So that's the zoning district intent. Again, with them trying to establish this cultural campus, excuse me, one of the key drivers behind it, and I certainly welcome the applicant to speak to what informs or what is really forming their plan, but the plan is to develop a entrepreneurship and business incubator center for the East African community here in the South Metro. And so what they wanna do is provide office, makerspace, business incubators, as well as other services that help support startup businesses in that community. And then what they also wanna provide is ancillary services alongside that. And interestingly enough, FD2, as a zoning district, does allow for a lot of other ancillary uses that support business, which is the key to FD2. And so that would include hotel, restaurants, those types of uses which you often see associated with or serving local businesses as kind of an ancillary supportive function. What this is really doing is kind of bringing all of those uses under one roof to benefit from those services in one location. So staff has evaluated the intent of the zoning district. We do think that the use is consistent with the zoning district intent. Thanks, Amy. Next slide. So again, getting just to background on FD2, there's 48 parcels in Bloomington that have this zoning designation. They're primarily located along American Boulevard in between Nicollet Avenue spanning over to Highway 77 or Old Cedar. There is one outlier along Lyndale Avenue, but as I said, a very wide range of uses. There are a lot of office and warehouse-type sites in FD2, but it also has hotels and some other uses included in with it. So I think what happens with some of our older zoning districts is oftentimes they just happen to lump a lot of uses into a particular district, and that's kind of what happened with FD2. But all of these sites are served by arterial or collector roadways, so they have roadways that serve them, have a high level of capacity in terms of the traffic volumes that would be associated with these types of uses. So important to note that. Next slide, Amy. Thanks. Important to note that many of the uses that's included in this definition are already allowed in some form within the FD2 zoning district, either as a permitted or a conditional or an accessory use. So you can see about half the uses listed within the definition are already allowed in FD2. The other half that are not allowed, you know, there's a variety of reasons why a use may not be allowed in a zoning district. It might be, in some cases, be as simple that there's been no community demand to see that use at a particular site. So there's been no public push to include a new use within a district. In other cases, it might be that the city is trying to protect or keep those zoning districts kind of dedicated to certain types of uses. So this is the case in many of our industrial districts where we don't allow pure retail or other types of land uses that are gonna carve out or are gonna kind of degrade the existing industrial land base, which is available for all sorts of different business opportunities that are high employers in the city of Bloomington. So the key there being that that's another reason why some of these uses may not have been allowed within this district. And then another reason is, you know, this has come up with schools and places of assembly and other types of uses. There's been some desire from some, you know, entities to try and allow some of these uses in our industrial districts. As standalone uses, staff and Planning Commission and City Council, we've all been very much in concert on this, that those types of uses may not be good mix with our industrial zoning districts. They may present, you know, operational characteristics that doesn't vibe well just operationally with industrial uses with truck traffic and other things. So standalone uses, such as place of assembly or indoor recreation entertainment, for example, those uses probably don't work well as a standalone use, but when integrated into a campus where they can't exceed more than 50% of the total floor area, staff thinks it can be effectively managed. For one, no one use can dominate the whole operation of a site. And two, through the procedure of a conditional use permit application, we'll talk about that, that gives the city staff, the Planning Commission, Council, and the public an avenue and opportunity to evaluate the use mix and the location that's being proposed. So very important that, you know, where some of these uses might not function well standalone, if it's being managed by one entity or in terms of a mix of different uses where they're gonna be doing business activities but also benefit from some of these supportive services on-site, that it can function well, again, subject to that detailed review associated with a conditional use permit. So let's try the next slide. Thanks. This is just identifying, this is the use table, just showing that it would be established as a conditional use in the FD2 district. I spoke a little bit about conditional use permit application, the conditional use permit application process, but again, just to reiterate that we have permitted uses in Bloomington, we have conditional uses, we have accessory uses. Conditional use is the only one that requires a specific zoning entitlement or approval prior to occupancy, and that's, of course, setting aside if there's, you know, building additions or other site improvements that would drive other applications. But a conditional use permit requires a public hearing at the Planning Commission. Some uses in the Bloomington city code can be approved by the Planning Commission, subject to appeal. However, given that some of the uses within this definition already require City Council approval, like place of assembly and university, I believe, it would be proposed in this ordinance to you that the City Council would have to take action on a cultural campus application. So just to clarify that. And in terms of other versus just a standard permitted use, a conditional use permit process, you know, what we're looking for is that those uses are required to be fully compliant with city code. So they have to come up to code for parking, lighting, landscaping, sidewalks, all of those different types of characteristics that are required for a conditional use. So that's important. Secondly, it also has to meet the required findings for not being injurious to the neighborhood. It has to pass the public health, safety, and welfare test associated with any CUP. So these are the elements why we would strongly urge and recommend that if such a use were adopted or approved, that it be designated as a conditional use, and the applicant is supportive of that approach. So with that, I will go to the next slide, please, Amy. Thanks. And Planning Commission did hold a public hearing on this item, just to note, and no one did speak at the hearing other than the applicant, but Planning Commission did have some discussion about the mix of uses and how that would work out in practicality, and so we did answer some of those questions. But overall, they were very supportive of this application and generally this idea of establishing a cultural campus. So they did recommend approval, so both staff and Planning Commission are recommending approval on this ordinance. I'm happy to take questions.
Council, any questions for Mr. Johnson? Councilmember Coulter?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick question, just to clarify, there is no... So there's obviously no single use can be more than 50% of the floor area, but there's no minimum percentage, correct?
Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, Mayor Councilmember Coulter, that's correct. There is no minimum, so it could be theoretically 50, 49, 1, theoretically.
And I guess that's the question. I'm wondering if staff has thought at all about, I mean, you know, the definitions in city code sort of are what they are, but, you know, is a bookshelf with two to three books, does that qualify as a library, as an example? And so I'm wondering how that... Where does the line get drawn in that sort of sense?
Mr. Johnson?
Mayor, Councilmember Coulter, you certainly have to use reasonable judgment. So if there was a one-square-foot or, you know, a five-square-foot bookshelf, I don't think that would meet the city code definition of a library, but that's certainly something that we would evaluate as we received an application in terms of evaluating their floor plan and their project description as to how they will implement a cultural campus. But it would be our expectation that it would be a legitimate use as it's defined in our city code.
And then just to clarify, 'cause I, you know, a lot of times when we've talked about this, too, we use these terms that I think a lot of the general public doesn't necessarily follow, but generally speaking, the City Council has a fair amount of authority when it comes to conditional use permits, correct? I mean, this is not one of those... That's not necessarily one of those areas where if it, you know, it is what it is and we get to vote it up or down based on those criteria. We have a little more leeway in terms of defining conditional use permits, correct?
Mr. Johnson?
Mayor, Councilmember Coulter, that's absolutely correct, and again, that's why it's we designate uses as permitted by right versus conditional use. And I think you're correct that we do... Planners are guilty of getting into the weeds of terminology with respect, but there's two things I forgot to say about this use specifically and why CUPs are important. We're not just evaluating the use mix of the proposed cultural campus, but we're also evaluating the site, because the site presents a lot of characteristics that are unique to it in terms of access, circulation, the amount of parking, you know, sidewalks, other things that will make it a good fit for a cultural campus. So those are all things we'd evaluate. And yes, you would have the authority, if it didn't meet the findings, to deny it.
Thank you.
Council, additional questions? Councilmember Lohman?
Thank you, Mayor. So nice succinct presentation. Appreciate that. So just in terms of when we look at this particular proposal that's being put forward, did staff look at this in terms of, you know, just this particular area, or did it look to see... I know this is privately initiated, but if, let's say, the city were to put this forward, would we just use this FD2 area? Or would we look to places and other places? And I guess my other question is, are we seeing this utilized in other cities? Help me understand some of the history of this, 'cause it sounds kind of unique here, or maybe it's not unique and I just haven't heard.
Yeah, Mayor. Mayor Councilmember Lohman, so in terms of would we apply the use to other zoning districts, you know, as we... Similar to what all of you who worked on the industrial zoning code updates, we evaluated the full menu of uses when we redid the full use table for our industrial districts. And so as we looked to update other zoning districts in the zoning code, either taking them from Chapter 19 to 21, or in terms of just updating them more generally, we certainly could evaluate whether a cultural campus could be a fit in some of our zoning districts. But as you said, because it's a privately initiated, we're only focused on the FD2 district for now. Certainly, if directed or as part of our standard evaluation, when we look at city code amendments, we could look at what other uses this use might be a good fit for. But again, we're just focused on FD2 for now. In terms of what other cities are doing, it's more anecdotal in our research. We know that this use in some form and some definition does exist in other communities. It is new to Bloomington, but certainly in Minneapolis and St. Paul and a few other suburbs here in the inner ring, it does exist. It's just more of a matter of how do they clearly define it, and it's gonna vary a little bit in terms of the use mixes that are allowed. But, you know, it's very similar to a community center. I think the crux of it here is allowing more business and supportive service activities like restaurant and those other things and bringing them all in one place, and then certainly have place of assembly aspect as well. So it does exist. We haven't done... We haven't detailed how all those uses are defined in other communities and what specific other communities they're allowed in, but we do know that they do. It does exist.
That's good reference. And so from an institutional or a mixed-use use, if we were to rezone it, why would that not work in a scenario with these FD areas? So if we take the... Let's say if we just put it institutional, we just rezoned it, let's say just one of these FD, limited institutional, why would that not work as opposed to doing this? I mean, so we're gonna create a subset underneath this as a... Or, you know, why don't we just go with the mixed use and just change the, you know, make the FD a mixed use? Why go this route as opposed to those other routes? What are the advantages and disadvantages?
Mr. Johnson?
Sure, Mayor. Councilmember Lohman, if the use were to ever discontinue, say it exists for a period just for the sake of discussion, say it exists for 10 years, and then you had already rezoned it to allow more retail-oriented uses or, say, standalone place of assembly or other uses that may not be a good fit by itself within FD2, I think that that area of the city is well-defined as a corridor of jobs and office warehouse-type sites. I think that you wanna maintain that in order to support the employment in that area. And so I think rezoning the site opens up more opportunities for reuse should this occupancy go away. You know, nothing's forever. So I think creating a new use and designating it as a conditional use is a good approach without kind of changing the underlying area and potentially doing a spot zoning-type scenario where you have one retail site or one... Frankly, a lot of our place of assembly sites in town are zoned, are one single family. So I don't think you'd wanna change the zoning just to fit the use. I think it's good to allow the base underlying intent of this area and that zoning district to continue should the occupancy not sustain.
Council, any additional questions? Mr. Johnson, you said the applicant is here as well. Is there anything the applicant would like to add? Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. My name is Jacob Steen with Larkin Hoffman, and it's a pleasure to be here in person tonight. As I mentioned, as Nick mentioned, I represent the applicant, a Free Hospitality Group. They are available via WebEx, too, so they are available for any questions. But first, I want to just say thank you to staff and commend staff to you. We've worked extensively with staff in cooperating and collaborating on this text amendment. It's really the first step of what is a pretty exciting project in the city. It's intended, as Mr. Johnson said, to be ultimately a business hub for the South Metro East African business community, and it's going to be an exciting mix of culturally complementary uses. That includes a restaurant, workshare, university, gathering space, and ultimately this business incubator that will help East African entrepreneurs in the community take an idea and grow it, and it's gonna be a really great thing for not just the community but the region in general. As Nick also said, we are looking at 1701 and 1801 American Boulevard. They are two contiguous buildings that were developed together, so it's a really... So it's a really great site for us. We won't get too much into that, but we will be, if this is passed before you, again, pretty soon, with a CUP application for the first phase of this project. So like I said, we have worked closely with staff on this language and we have amended our requests to address some of the concerns that have been brought up during the Planning Commission. We think we have a really good text amendment before you. I would also note to Councilmember Lohman's comment that I have worked with similar institutions, both based on the Swedish-American community and the Norwegian-American community in the city of Minneapolis, and they have both large full block campuses. So there is a lot of precedent for this use and it's, it's really an exciting opportunity. So like I said, I'm happy to answer any questions. Muktar Sharif should be available electronically via WebEx on behalf of Afreak, but otherwise I'm just here to answer questions.
Thank you, Mr. Steen. Counsel, any questions of Mr. Steen? No questions? I think Mr. Johnson's presentation and the synopsis from the Planning Commission, I thought was very helpful to read through as well. So thank you if you just stick around in case we do have additional questions. With that, this is a public hearing. I'd like to open a public hearing right now on item 7.2 on a city code amendment for regarding cultural campus. Anyone who would like to speak on this, please, if you could come forward, appreciate it.
Hi, could I get the overhead?
Ms. Ness, welcome.
Thanks. So what is being proposed is a multi-use facility, and the name of the city code should reflect that. Multi-uses are already allowed, example, restaurant and retail, Subway and Walmart, bank and grocery, TCF and Cub Foods. The difference is that this conditional use permit request includes uses not permitted in FD2. From page one of the staff report, culture campus, no one use occupying more than 50%. So again, no one use occupying more than 50% of the floor. My comment, this would be difficult for the city to monitor for compliance. The city would rely on neighboring uses to report non-compliance, that causes conflict. Page two, where it shows the freeway development and then roadside business areas. So the following are currently not allowed in FD2. Place of Assembly, Event Center, Indoor Recreation and Entertainment, Library, Museum, Social Service Distribution Facility. My comment, in looking at this list, I have a question. Did the city originally not permit tax exempt uses in this zone because the FD2 zone is zoned to generate needed income? And what is the reason the list of uses are not permitted? And I did hear him try to explain, you know, how these things came to be. Anyway, it does not make sense that the city currently does not permit uses such as a place of assembly, event center, indoor recreation, entertainment. But if three are combined, then it is permitted. If it is the intensity of use, I believe a facility that includes place of assembly, event center, indoor recreation, entertainment will be just as intense as any one of these uses alone. Uses within would still be subject to the relevant performance standards, other site specific standards such as off-street parking would also be evaluated. My comment again, this would be difficult for the city to monitor for compliance. Page five, oh, so that was showing the uses that are permitted or not. Okay, so page five, in staff's judgment, these uses established independently or as a single occupancy would not be appropriate uses within the FD2 zoning district. Again, my comment, if approved, it does not make sense that any one of these single uses not be permitted if the design of the property and the use generates the same traffic levels and parking demands of the proposed three-use site. So if these three uses had the same traffic levels and parking demands as just one of these uses we're showing, it does not make sense that you have to have three uses and you can't have the one use. For instance, an indoor recreation center that has several batting cages will have less patrons than other proposed three uses that do not break up the facility. So why would the city not permit an indoor recreation center? Again, you have to have three uses. You can't just have an indoor recreation center, you'd have to have three uses. Page six, understanding the hours of operation anticipated staffing, parking requirements of each specific use will be paramount in determining if the proposed culture campus will function adequately at a given location. My comment, the city should be concerned with actual use. The city should be concerned that the proposed use does not reflect the actual use. They should be using square footage and stuff and not what the applicant proposes. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ness. Anything additional? Any additional public comments on item 7.2?
Greetings. Well, I would like to-
Again, if you could bring the microphone down a bit so we could hear you.
Sure. I would like to thank Mr. Johnson for his extensive explanation.
And, and I'm sorry, we're going to need your name one more time.
I'm sorry.
Just officially for the record.
Sure, Barbara Schneider. I want to thank Mr. Johnson for his extensive explanation of how all of this works with regard to the thinking of the planning committee. And also Mr. Steen's introduction to the purpose of the cultural center as a South Metro business hub for the East African immigrant community. I think this is a wonderful proposal in many respects. My questions are of a sensitive nature, and I do not want them to be misconstrued, misunderstood, and I don't want assumptions made about my motivations for asking them. I believe that they are relevant questions. The main one being, because this is going to be specifically for the East African community, will this be primarily a business venture, a religious venture? When it is established, if it is established, will it receive tax, will, will it be considered a religious tax use? That's one question that I have. I believe that it's relevant. There is already considerable East African cultural activity in the metro area, and I'm wondering if we need more. These are questions I was not expecting to ask until I heard this presentation. My questions had to do more with whether or not this business incubator would be open to the public? Or would it be specifically for the East African immigrant community? If they are going to run it, does that mean that it is a membership thing? Or if, if, if the public is able to use it for their own business ideas? Also, the 1701 and 1801 properties are more than 40 years old. It will require significant retrofitting, if it hasn't been done already, to accommodate the technology required for a business incubator and to be a business hub. And we've already talked about the public health building, we've been talking about Creekside, these aging buildings, this is another aging building, it's not going to get any newer. And so changing the zoning to accommodate this one location, and maybe that doesn't matter, you know, they could change to another location or whatever, but I just wanted to bring that up. Also, I used to be an executive in a hospitality business. And I noticed that the, there is a hotel directly next to this property which shares access through the parking lot. And because this new proposal for this cultural center includes so many different types of activities, I think it's unreasonable to expect the children would not be partaking in those activities, particularly because we're talking about education and entertainment and that kind of thing, and it would be natural for children to participate in those things. Is the entire building on each side, 1701 and 1801, the entire building? Is that what we're talking about? Are we talking about individual units within those buildings? That is not clear in this. And I, it, it's hard for me to imagine how something like this, which is proposed, can be pulled off in the, in those buildings. With regard to the common access with the hotel, I was referring to security with children being there. I, I think that that is a particular concern. Perhaps that is outside of the discussion about this particular zoning change. It sort of blends in my mind, but those are some of the things that I wanted to bring up. Also, I-
Excuse me, Ms. Ness, your, your time is up. I'm sorry, your five minutes are up. Thank you.
Compliance. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comments?
Hi again, Mayor, Councilmembers. My name is Dennis Ordall, for the record. And it is getting a little warmer in here because my blood is starting to boil because I don't know what the hell they're talking about, excuse my language, but I don't know what they're talking about, incubators, this or that. But I think if I was sitting on the board right now, I would be saying, hey, they're going to focus on our members in the community because it's all about getting people together and, you know, getting, I don't know, getting people together in the community, that's what we need to do. You know, we're, they're talking about doing a community center, and we've been talking about it for how many years? You know, and I don't understand why the Planning Commission can plan all this other bullshit, these four-story buildings, but they can't put up a community center. And I haven't heard what, what, what is actually involved with, you know, what they plan on doing with their, their business. But it sounded to me like they're getting the community together, they're getting people together to, you know, I don't know, Kansas City of Bloomington do that for our community? We have to hire, or let somebody come in and do that for us? I, I, I mean, I don't know, my blood is just starting to boil because, yeah, I, I stayed up for the, the council meetings or whatever, and then two years later, all of a sudden you see these four-story buildings going up. Well, I thought the community center was more important than seeing these four-story buildings going up on Lindale Avenue. I, I don't, I don't, I guess I don't understand it.
Well, I, I think there's a difference, but I'm not sure-
I, I guess, I'm not, I, what is an incubator? What, what are they talking about?
A business incubator is an opportunity for entrepreneurs to come together and they, usually in a group, they come together, and there's different businesses, and they use resources, they use the building, they use expertise available to them to try and develop and grow their business. So entrepreneurs basically try and develop and incubate their business. That's what a business incubator is. They're common everywhere. They're, they're, they're very common.
Well, that's right here. That's, that's the members right here. You should be doing on the incubator on the community center, right? You should be getting our community involved and, and teaching our grandkids, you know, what's going on and how to go through life.
I, I appreciate your comments, I appreciate your, your concerns here. What we're trying to do is, is specifically talk about this, this proposal, okay? We're, we're not-
I'm talking about this proposal, you know, in, in a different manner, okay? I, I'm not up here, I'm down here.
So I think we need to be clear that the public hearing tonight is not about this, I mean, it is about a specific proposal. It's not about the specific proposal being brought forward by Mr. Steen's clients. What is being discussed tonight is a, a potential change to how land use is zoned in the city of Bloomington. It's not, is the specific proposal that's being brought forward the right one or what it includes or what it doesn't, or whatever it is. We need to be clear about what we're talking about here tonight.
Thank you for that.
So what, what, what are we talking about clear? Okay, I remember years ago that when there was a gas station over there on American Boulevard, they couldn't, they, you couldn't build a building on Lindale Avenue because you couldn't turn into that building. Well, they passed that because they needed that American Boulevard land, so they gave that gas station some property over here on Lindale Avenue, which had to make a left-hand turn on, to get into their access. And we got American Boulevard there, I mean, already we're sitting on the freeways. I mean, the freeways are, you know, bumper to bumper, and we got an 84-unit building going on Lindale Avenue. And it's funny, they can build that, but they can't build a community center. And we've been talking about everything that involves community, getting people together to make it work. And I, I just think it, it's taken away. Already, I have a, a city from the, on my butt because I have a tarp in my driveway. Well, yeah, well, I'm sure the storage buildings makes sure that they get tickets for that. Sorry, but I'm cold. But that's what I'm concerned about is the, the traffic going on American Boulevard.
So your concerns are the traffic related to this potential change in zoning?
Focus my mind on the traffic, okay? I've been here and I, and I've seen the things, what they do to, to build a building here in this-
What we, what we are doing tonight is looking to rezone this parcel of property. We're not, we're not approving, we're not denying what the buildings are going to be, what the use is going to be. What we're doing is rezoning this property. That, that's the discussion.
Okay, rezoning the property. And I've heard over the, the four years on the community center, you don't have enough property in the city of Bloomington to pu, to put what you want to put onto it, you know?
So this discussion is not about the community center?
Right, right, it's not.
It's not.
It's not. It's about you giving an permit for somebody to come in to our community to, to make people get together and, you know?
I, I appreciate your comments. I think I understand the direction you're going. I, I appreciate them, they're, they're slightly germane to the topic that we-
They are, they are. I'm very sorry because I, all I want to do is sit and listen and-
Our five minutes are up, so I, I appreciate it.
All right, well, I just want to put a fire under you and get you motivated, get the people in Bloomington instead of all these other people that are coming in and taking away from our community.
Well, I, I think these are people in our community, actually, who are, who are looking to develop this.
Well, I, I-
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, I will talk next time then.
And I hate to keep interrupting public comment, but just to be clear, the, the actual proposal for, you know, if this zoning change does move forward, the actual proposal for the facility itself, including parking and traffic and lighting and, and all of that, would come back before the city council? We would have another public hearing. This is not the final word on that proposal.
No, not at all, not at all. As I said, we're, we're talking about rezoning a parcel of property on, on American Boulevard. Additional public comment? Ms. Chaney, is there anyone online? Or, yes, you can.
In listening to this, the-
I'm going to need your name again.
Girl Crimer. In listening to this, what come to, what comes to my mind is, wow, this is a big project for a very specific group of people, right? And it's not going to be open to all of the Bloomington residents, to my understanding is what I'm hearing tonight. And there are requests to rezone it to do A, B, C, and D, which this, these facilities may or may not be able to do. And then I'm wondering about compliance. If there is going to be rules and regulations and all this that the city is going to set up and pass, where does the compliance piece come in? Who's going to, is the city council going to be monitoring this? Because there's A, B, C, D? It's a lot. And for one very specific community, it's not open to the whole population of Bloomington and the residents of Bloomington, just one very specific community within Bloomington, which is well-established already in Bloomington. Those are my thoughts and my questions and my concern. And I'm very concerned. Compliance, compliance, compliance. To say I'll do it, you know, and actually, who's going to be the watchdog, I guess? Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll just check my name.
Ms. Chaney, actually, if you could just write it down again, make sure we have it. Ms. Chaney, do we have anyone online?
Norah, is there, are there any callers?
No one is on cue. You may proceed.
Thank you.
Good evening again. Your name again for the record, please.
Amber Mathwig, resident of Bloomington. I am first and foremost getting up here to apologize to Mr. Sharif, to having to listen to just an extensive, extensive amount of racism and accusations about the East African community.
Excuse me, excuse, excuse me, one second. Amber, excuse me one second. Excuse me. There has been no one else interrupted who has spoken otherwise on both sides of this issue. I will not tolerate you interrupting someone who's speaking their opinion. I will not tolerate you interrupting someone who's speaking her opinion.
I understand that this is a conditional use permit depending upon Af- Afrik?
Afrik?
Yes, similar to what was already pointed out, that there are other centers like this for our Norwegian and Swedish backgrounds here in Minnesota, who are also immigrant communities, although longer established. And I think that this location appears to be extremely convenient for the East African community of Bloomington, and that it would greatly benefit them in many ways to be able to achieve that wonderful American dream that so many people leave their countries for many reasons to come achieve, and I would welcome the city council in making that decision to provide this opportunity, which is a privately funded, not publicly funded, opportunity for the East African community to lift themselves up by their bootstraps, if we want to go with that language tonight. And again, that it just seems to be a very convenient location. I know that they have probably already done their due diligence around funding and cost and the needs of the community, and I really look forward to seeing these future proposals. And Mr. Sharif, once again, I welcome you into our community.
Any additional comments?
Hello again, my name is Natalie Moros. I don't know how this got so far off track. I think it was kind of a diversion with how this is being handled. Mayor Bussey, you were correct, oh, you were incorrect. They're not rezoning the property. I think Councilman Coulter, you posted, pointed that out. This is about a city, a city change, changing the code. It affects all of FD2. It is not rezoning, it's not rezoning two properties. It changes the city code for all FD2.
You were correct. I misspoke there. I appreciate that.
Thank you. So I really think you know that this change in code is not necessary, just to go ahead with what we already have in Bloomington. Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification. I appreciate that. Anyone else? Ms. Chaney, one last check on the phones, please.
Norah, can you please check to see if there's any additional callers?
No one is on cue, ma'am. You may proceed.
Thank you.
Counsel, I see no one else coming forward. I'd look for a motion to close the public hearing tonight on item 7.2.
So moved.
Second, we have a motion by Councilmember Carter, a second by Councilmember Martin to close the public hearing on item 7.2. Hearing no further, counsel discussion. Ms. Christensen.
Thank you. Bloga?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Lowman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussey?
Aye. Motion carries, 7-0. Counsel questions, discussion on this, and I've got a couple that I was jotting down from speakers as they came forward, and I don't know if it's Mr. Johnson or Mr. Steen to answer the questions. What would the taxation breakdowns be? If it, if it's a single building, and if 50% was a educational facility and 10% was a, you know, incubator and so on, how, how would that break down?
Yeah, Mayor Bussey, as a planner, I don't want to pretend to be an expert in taxation, you know, maybe the assessor or somebody would give the best answer for that, but what I do know is that there is a similar type scenario off Cecilia Circle. I know of a building that's partially occupied by a place of assembly, and I know that they, that that property does not have tax-exempt status as a result of that. I don't know the state laws surrounding that, but I believe when there's a mixed occupancy scenario, that does not grant them that full exemption. That's my understanding.
And, Mr. Verbui, anything, any insight on this? No?
No, Mr. Mayor and council members will certainly follow up and have some information from the assessor as well.
Thank you. Mr. Steen, I think there is a couple of questions about the intention of the use of the entire building, and I think that was the case, I believe. The address that we have listed was the entire building that they were looking to, to use in some way. Is that correct?
Sure, Mr. Mayor. At this point, 1701 has been acquired, but there are existing tenants. So as those leases expire, the use will expand into the building. We, we've also got 1801 under contract, similar scenario. There are some open tenant spaces that will ultimately be developed. We plan to come through for subsequent phases of this conditional use permit, and we do anticipate that there will be an initial phase in the coming months, assuming that the application or the tax amendment is approved, and a few months following that, once we, we identify those exact mix of uses, parking demands, then we'll be coming forward with another phase.
Thank you. And so in the, the past, the other examples that you cited-
Sure.
Are these buildings open to the public, or are they specific only to a, a certain group or a certain membership?
No, and that's a great question. Two examples I would cite, and like I said, I've worked with both, is the American Swedish Institute, and that is, of course, open to the public. There is a, many of the same similar uses, museum, restaurant, gallery, event space, Norway House as well. They're undergoing approximately $18 million expansion right now. It's on a shared city block, shares a campus with Norwegian Language Church, Mindukirken, in, on Franklin Avenue. And it is interesting to note that these uses are both, those uses are really good examples of, of how the immigrant community has, has changed, because those communities both started in Minneapolis on these blocks where they're at now. And now these are largely blocks, neighborhoods that are dominated by the East African community. So both of those entities have a really close relationship with that community, and it's just really indicative of how the immigrant community grows within the, the region.
Thank you for that. Thank you. Mr. Johnson, questions about compliance? If, if a certain use was designated for, again, a certain percentage, and how, how do we monitor compliance with that type of thing?
Yeah, Mayor Bussey, good question. There's a multitude, there's hundreds and hundreds of conditional use permits in Bloomington. If we receive a complaint about one particular use being out of compliance with its conditions of approval, then we would do an investigation, typically performed by environmental health, but planning staff would be involved in that. Whenever you approve a conditional use permit, there's typically a condition that is, tracks with the approval that states that the cul, in this case, I'm, I'm not, I'm going to use a different use. The use is approved as shown in the approved plans in this case. And the reason that we do that, the reason we attach this condition, is that if the use were to expand or significantly change, then of course, the performance criteria, use characteristics would not be consistent with what the city council or the planning commission, depending on the use, had approved. So the reason that we attach that condition is, again, in order to provide ongoing compliance and enforcement, that they are in compliance with their conditional use permit, but also to, if, if there are significant changes that are proposed, we have that condition there that says, nope, you can't do that, you have to go back and get your conditional use permit amended. So, you know, certainly, there's always a sliding scale. Some people wishes that we were more heavy-handed in our enforcement activities, some people wish that, you know, that there was no regulation whatsoever. So we have to come down somewhere in the middle to, A, gain compliance with the condition of approval, but do so in a manner that is respectful of all the different parties that, you know, in play.
All right, thank you. Counsel, questions? I see Councilmember Lowman's hand up, and then Councilmember Coulter next. Councilmember Lowman.
Be quick, Mayor, you got most of my questions. So just to be clear, the, the proposed use of trying to put the Swedish Institute type or Norway type thing into Bloomington could not currently be done with the FD2 zoning that we have right now. You would need to make these changes in order for that, for this use to be, to be put together.
Mayor Bussey, Councilmember Lowman, that's correct.
And then, and then, again, I know that Mayor asked this, but I just, I've got to make sure that I understand this. So like the Swedish Institute, this thing that's being proposed, this is going to be open to the public, right?
Mayor Bussey, I would defer to the applicant on, on that question.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lowman, that's correct. The intent is, of course, that there would be businesses here, and ultimately, the idea is that there would be shops and spaces, maker spaces, as the city defines them, where the community could come and purchase products that are manufactured, imported, or distributed by these individual entrepreneurs. So it, not only will they be invited, the public, but they will be critic, critical for the success of the use.
So a little different than the Swedish Institute, maybe more like the Mercado Central?
What, what I would say is, it's a mix of the uses. It's, it, it's intended to incorporate all sorts of elements, but yeah, Midtown Global Market would be a similar comparable use, but there's elements of, of each of these, these other institutions.
Thanks for that clarification. I used to get my soup down there at that Global Market, and I've been in the Swedish Institute several times. So thanks for making that clear in my mind in terms of what's being proposed here. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Councilmember Coulter.
Thank you, Mayor, and I actually have a quick question for Mr. Johnson, if he's able to, to step away just briefly, but-
Mr. Johnson, if you could, we can continue this conversation offline.
Yeah, it's a very quick one, and then I can get back to that conversation. But to sort of pick up on what the mayor asked about, and I, you know, understanding you obviously don't work for environmental health, but, you know, there, there is compliance, and then there's the enforcement side. And I guess the, I think a question that I suspect a lot of folks are wondering is, if a, a facility founds to not be in compliance, what options does the city have at its disposable, as, at its disposal to either ensure compliance or say, sorry, you're out of luck, move on?
Mr. Johnson?
Mayor Bussey, Councilmember Coulter, they typically initiate enforcement just with communications, with warning, providing a warning letter saying, come into compliance by X date. If they do do so, they might provide an additional, shorter window of time to gain compliance. Ultimately, the city can issue fines to those properties, which can recur on a, a, you know, a per month or per quarter basis, depending on the nature of the violation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, additional questions? Councilmember Nelson.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I got a few questions here. My first one is, I, I, it's kind of half-comment, half-question, but it, it feels to me that we're kind of crossing the line into discussing the actual proposal and not just staying focused on the change to the zoning or to the use table. I will say that from what I've heard, the proposal sounds excellent. I think it would be a, a great project within the community. From what I have read in terms of the language of the use, I have some concerns. So let me ask a few questions there. I know Planning Commissioner had asked a question about requiring at least the majority or at least one of the uses, or something along those lines, to be something that is either already permitted or conditional use within that zoning, so that it wasn't a building, not necessarily this proposal, but any future proposal, wasn't just a bunch of uses that were already determined to not make sense in that area.
Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, Mayor Councilmember Nelson, thanks for that question. I appreciate that you delve into that area, because that, that was an extensive discussion by the planning commission. That was something that they considered in terms of evaluating any potential changes from the dais. And one thing they talked about is, again, making sure that, providing that at least one of the uses, the, the majority use, the 50% use, would be something that's already conditionally or permitted, or allowed conditionally or permitted in that particular zoning district. When, when staff answered that question, we did confer with the applicant that that would present potential challenges to their future expansion, and the reason that they took that position is that currently they're considering the incorporation of a place of assembly into that campus. And so ultimately, what staff's position was, is that I think that that's a legitimate concern, but it's certainly something that can be evaluated as part of a conditional use permit process. Again, if the use of mixes associated with one of these campuses doesn't work well together, and one use tends to dominate, that might present nuisance characteristics or might be injuries to the neighborhood. If the site is not appropriate for that mix of uses, then that's something that could be denied in terms of the conditional use permit review. So the planning commission was comfortable with that, and they decided to move forward in support of the applicant.
A quick follow-up on that, and I appreciate the explanation. Again, the, my concern with that, in my mind, is that it's a lot easier to make that decision when we actually implement the use changes, as opposed to when there's a specific applicant. And I know we have discretion, but we've also been cautioned several times that our discretion is somewhat limited, that, you know, if we can't find a really good reason, and then particularly if we're going to deny a place of assembly without really, really good reason, if it was otherwise completely code compliant, you know, I'm concerned about the situation in a particular proposal that would put the city in, as opposed to deciding that upfront during this use conversation.
Yeah. Mayor Bussey, Councilmember Nelson, I think that's a fair concern. I, I certainly don't want to minimize the, the possibility of that. Of course, your city attorney is going to, you know, guide you that denials have to be based on evidentiary fact, and, you know, in terms of things that are, in terms of not being able to meet the required findings for a conditional use permit. I guess what I would say is that in terms of, I guess, where staff has gotten, where staff has gotten, and where planning commission supported this ordinance, is that any one use can't exceed the 50% element. And I know with, you know, potentially, I, I know we keep talking about these two sites on American Boulevard, as much as I'm trying to steer us away from that conversation, but the fact remains is that i- if the, if the campus itself, you know, if no one of these uses can be more than 50%, then that really limits the opportunities for some of the nuisance characteristics. And in addition to that, if it's, if it's managed or owned by the same operator, they'll have a much better opportunity or ability to address nuisance characteristics that might arise. And I don't mean that the term nuisance in a pejorative or a negative context, it's just some uses don't work well together, hence why we have zoning in the first place. So I, I don't minimize the, the concern in that regard. I, I just think that, I, I still do believe in the strength of the conditional use permit process, it just has to be based in, in, in ability to make the findings, so.
One of the other questions that planning commission asked is something you just mentioned. It was, is, is it required that there be common ownership across the entire campus, or could there be multiple owners? And how, how does that function?
Thanks for that question. Councilmember Nelson, there could be multiple owners, and similar to planned developments like we have in Bloomington, if there's multiple owners, then they would both have to sign the application. If they want to make any changes to the cultural campus following the first initial approval, they'd have to amend the application, and they'd have to both sign that if they are fee owners of record as part of that application.
And then potentially, my last question, we'll, we'll find out. In Minneapolis, I, I believe those other places that you had mentioned are in Minneapolis, Swedish and Norwegian places. Is this language that's being proposed similar to the use language in Minneapolis that allowed for those campuses? And/or did they use a different model or format to do those development projects?
Yeah, Mayor Councilmember Nelson, I defer to the applicant and possibly Planning Manager Markard on that question.
Mr. Steen, and then, then we'll ask Councilmember, or Mr. Markard if he wants to chime in as well. Mr. Steen?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Nelson. Interesting fact, before I was an attorney, I was a city planner for the city of Minneapolis. And I can tell you that those uses are classified as community centers, and those do require conditional use permits, so there are some regulations, but they, the city of Bloomington with this definition would have considerably more controls over the proposed use than the city of Minneapolis does with those similar uses. would have considerably more controls over the proposed use than the city of Minneapolis does with those similar uses.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Mr. MarkiGard, anything to add to that answer, or?
Yeah, Mayor Bussey, councilmembers, good evening, nothing to add to that.
Very good. I, I've gotten a note a couple of times here. I believe Mr. Abraham, one of the applicants, would like to speak. Ms. Chaney, can we unmute Mr. Abraham so he can speak?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor and the city council. I'm the CFO for Afri Cosmetology Group, and I just wanted to, I mean, this question has been answered, but I just wanted to say that we absolutely want this project to be an integral part of the community and open to all. The idea behind, you know, the business incubator function is to offer a place to provide extra help for members of our community, to ensure that they become, you know, successful business owners in Bloomington and in Minnesota at large. And some of these other uses are really to create a really wonderful place where people can come, they can eat, they can buy things, you know, all the things that we'd like to do in a cultural campus that really showcases, you know, the best of our community in the city of Bloomington. Thank you.
Thanks for the comments. Council, anything additional?
Real, real briefly, Mayor.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Martin?
Thank you so much. I, I guess, I, is this questions or comments? Hold off on comments, or now?
No, please, comments.
Okay. I, I just want to say something I've been extremely excited about, and I, it really feels like we're picking up steam, is kind of breathing some new life into our commercial nodes across Bloomington, whether that's Portland American, Lyndale Avenue retrofit, and now having a private party come forward with a really innovative proposal to have staff show a lot of creativity and flexibility to figure out how to make this happen in a responsible way, I, I think is cool. It could go a long way towards kicking off diversifying Bloomington's economy, encouraging small business development. Obviously, specifics, once we see the specific proposal, but larger scale changes like this, I think are pretty neat. And this might just be a, me getting cranky at 9:30 situation. But, but just in, in general, moving forward, if you have a question or a concern, it sounds like a lot of folks tonight had some concerns, they were passionate about, about an item on an agenda, please email or call any of your council members. A lot of the concerns that are being brought up on item after item after item could have been handled in a quick email. We're happy to do it, that's what we're here for. It, it's easy to forget sometimes, maybe the first meeting back, and we're all kind of here together in a smaller group, that there's a city of 85,000 people out there. And I think the sound on the wind might be them grinding their teeth a little bit that we're at 9:30, and we haven't hit some of the biggest items on the agenda. So please, our emails, our phone numbers are on the website. Reach out to us anytime, there's a lot of folks out there besides the six folks commenting tonight.
Council, anything additional? Thanks, Councilmember Martin. Councilmember Coulter?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, excuse me, Councilmember Martin stole a lot of what I was gonna say here, so I, I won't repeat too much of that. But I, you know, again, I, I think we just need to be very, very clear about what we're talking about here tonight, because we are, we, you know, it's, it's easy to cite specific examples to illustrate a point, but we are not talking about the specific proposal that Mr. Steen's client is bringing forward. I'm gonna say that again. We are not talking about the specific proposal for this specific facility that Mr. Steen's client is bringing forward. We are talking about changing allowable uses in a certain zoning district based on the definition that Mr. Johnson had in his, in his presentation, that it, that would go into city code that is, I, you know, it is not culturally specific, it does not prescribe any particular use. It says a, I'm gonna paraphrase here, that provided none of these uses exceed 50%, these three uses can, at least three of these uses can exist together in a cultural campus in the FD2 zoning district. That's basically the long and the short of it. And I, I think what this comes down to is the difference between can we do something and should we do something? Because the question before us tonight is, should this particular use be allowed in this particular zoning district? That's it, that's the question. The question is, if, at some point in the future, if this moves forward, Mr. Steen and his clients will come back, and the question will be, should this specific proposal move forward? As it's outlined with all of the other things that I mentioned earlier, parking and traffic flow and lighting and pedestrian safety and sidewalks and park dedication fees and all those other things that, that go along with development, that question will come before us at a future date, if this moves forward. So that, you know, I think a lot of folks raised very, very important questions, very good concerns tonight. Those are not the questions that are before us tonight. And I would add to, you know, what Councilmember Martin said, if you have questions, reach out to city council, reach out to staff. I'm sure if you have specific questions about what his clients are bringing forward, I don't want to speak for Mr. Steen, but I, you know, I know him, and I, I'm sure he'd be happy to answer questions that folks have to, you know, we, that, we need to focus on the question that's in front of us. And that, I think, I, I think this is a really exciting opportunity for a variety of different proposals, a lot of different possibilities, and, and doing something different. And, and I think there's just a lot of potential here in the city of Bloomington, and I, I think this is a really good move, and it's something I can support.
Thank you for that summation, Councilmember Coulter. It's a, it's a good point. We are talking about the change, the city code amendment, and that's, we heard a lot of things and a lot of questions tonight, but it comes down to we're talking about a privately initiated city code amendment and the change in language. I see Councilmember Beloga and then Councilmember Lohman. Councilmember Beloga?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Since the building is currently occupied and the use is going to be changing, I'm having a hard time wrapping my head around how the use measurements work during the transition. So we say that no one use will exceed 50%, but if, say, the use is currently 75% office, does, that means that the building's out of compliance, or what, what does it mean?
Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Beloga, I'll try and be brief. Ultimately, what the applicant would be seeking in their conditional use permit is what do they want the final approved condition to be? If there is a transitional period in the interim, that typically can be allowed through the process of a conditional use permit. Conditional use permits are valid for a year up until a building permit being pulled, so if there is fit-outs within the building, as lo- so long as they are consistent with the approved plan that was approved within the conditional use permit, they can continue to track into that transitional fashion. That's a good question, though. Ultimately, what they would be seeking your approval for would be the, the final permanent condition, you know, pending a future amendment, if they wanted to expand or change the facility down the road.
So, next said differently, what we'd be looking at when the owner submits the plan is, is the final development plan and making choices on that for the various uses.
That's, that's correct, and what I would add is that if there are existing occupancies that are subject to change, the applicant for any parcel should include that information and a timeline for when those uses would turn over.
Got it, okay, thank you.
Councilmember Lohman?
Mayor, where are we at on this? Are we, are we past the, past the public hearing, and we're ready to vote on this thing, or?
The, the, the public hearing has been closed, and we've been working through questions regarding that, and little staff discussions, some commentary from the staff, so, and I, I'm not seeing more hands going up. So if you have a comment to make, or if you'd like to propose some action, is Councilmember Lohman?
I've got both. I'll, I'll be happy to make a comment here, and then, of course, if, obviously, if somebody else puts their hands up, we can certainly move to them, and I'm ready to move this, too. I, I think that, you know, I, I think some of the concerns that were raised by the public illustrate how this may be utilized in the future. And I think those are good concerns to, to look at, and I appreciate those folks who are in the audience who've raised their concerns about this. And I think we should look, look forward, our compliance may be an issue. But I do think I, we have to weigh that specifically in terms of the changes that are being made here, and how they may be expanded to other zoning areas in the future, if we decide to do this, and the economic development opportunities we may gain by being able to do that. I personally think that having a Swedish Institute or a Mercado or a place where I used to get my soup, you know, the old World Market, would be an awesome opportunity to have here with one of the world's largest malls. I think that's a great juxtaposition and a great place for us to be as a community, especially as Councilmember Martin raised about how we can move the city forward. I think it's just awesome. So with that being said, I'd be happy to go ahead.
Councilmember Lohman, can I put the brakes on you for half a second? Because I believe Councilmember Carter has a comment. Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I have a comment, and then it will lead into a question. So I will say, in the many conversations that I've had with residents in, in 2019, knocking lots and lots of doors, like Councilmember Martin brought up, you know, revitalization of our neighborhood corridors came up over and over and over again. And many people had the idea of cultural nodes or cultural hubs or cultural corridors with the recognition that the metro area is diversifying very quickly. And we have, you know, cultural roots and heritage that have been here for a long time, before, you know, white people were here. And then we have, you know, the people who immigrated, like, throughout the time of Bloomington. And so I think there's just a lot to celebrate, there's a lot to learn about the variety of different cultures and ethnicities that are in our community. And based on what I've heard over and over again, people are excited for these types of opportunities. And so I guess a question I would have is, this is specific to this zoning district, but would we want to consider allowing a cultural campus type of change to other zoning areas of our community? And maybe that's a, beyond this discussion tonight, but it feels, you know, we're very laser-focused on this kind of zoning district, but would we want to consider in other parts of our community?
And I will say, Councilmember Carter, the reason, it is, you're right, it is laser-focused, because this is applicant-driven right now, tonight. If we, if we see that this might be something we want to do, it would be something we could direct staff to investigate and bring forward and bring back to the, to the council. We'll, we'll have to see if that plays out in that way, but tonight, what we're doing, yes, it is laser-focused, because it's, uh, it's applicant-driven tonight.
Awesome, thank you for clarifying that, and we'll keep that in mind.
Thank you. Council, any additional questions? Councilmember Beloga? No, okay, I'm sorry, an old hand up, my bad. If there are no further comments or questions, Councilmember Lohman?
Let's get this moving. I'll go ahead to move to approve a privately initiated city code amendment by adoption of the ordinance establishing the definition of cultural campus as a use and designating it as a conditional use in the FD2 zoning district.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Lohman, second by Councilmember Carter, to approve the privately initiated city code amendment by adoption of the ordinance as discussed this evening. Any further discussion by council? Hearing none? Ms. Christensen?
Thank you, Beloga?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Lohman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussey?
Aye, motion carries seven zero. Councilmember Lohman, summary publication?
I'll move, Mayor, I'll move a resolution directing summary publication of the ordinance to define cultural campus as a new use designation and designating cultural campus as a conditional use in the FD2 zoning district.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Lohman, second by Councilmember Carter for summary publication. No further council discussion. Ms. Christensen?
Thank you, Beloga? Councilmember Beloga?
Sorry, aye.
Thank you, Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Lohman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussey?
Aye, motion carries seven zero. Thank you for that discussion, and it will, look, look forward to the continued discussion with this. Thank you, Mr. Steen. Moving on, let's, items 7.3, 4, and 5 are public hearings, and they are basically changes to the city charter relating to a variety of different cleanup items and, and clarifications that the city attorney has brought forward for us to consider. And I will turn it over to Ms. Manderscheid, and we'll be taking 7, 3, 4, and 5 individually here, and Ms. Manderscheid.
Thank you, Mayor members. This is our first time back in the chambers, so if you can't hear me very well, or the slides aren't going, just let me know. We are gonna have one PowerPoint presentation, and it will cover all three of the proposed charter amendments. And then my request would be that we have three separate public hearings. So with regard to our, our time here tonight, this is the, this is a part of a larger process that is described in the packet. These recommendations are coming to you from the Charter Commission, who previously met earlier in the year. And just as a reminder, next slide, Amy. The charter is the city's constitution. The state law provides an amendment process. There are multiple options on how to amend the, the city's charter. I've included that state law provision in the packet materials. The method that's being proposed for your consideration tonight is typically considered one of the more efficient, and by that I mean, uh, uh, quick, with regard to time-efficient. And that is the, that the Charter Commission has a, takes consideration first and reviews the proposals to amend the charter, and then they make a recommendation to the city council. The city council, that process puts in, in motion a statutory process whereby the city council schedules and then holds a public hearing, which we're doing tonight. And this particular process to amend the city charter requires an unanimous vote of the city council. Next slide, Amy. So again, as I mentioned, there are three different proposals tonight. And the first one is an amendment to chapter, or excuse me, section 4.04. This edit was discovered by us in the legal department and in the clerk's office when we were working on the ordinances arising out of the election of, by the voters to implement ranked choice voting. During that process, we reviewed all the variety of regulations within our code and in our charter related to regulations. And during that time, we discovered that we could clean up this particular section 4.04. And so the item that's here for your consideration tonight is largely a clerical housekeeping item. Essentially, we believe that this provision was put in city charter to relate directly to appearing on the printed ballot. So it used, it reads currently, "All, all persons who desire to be elected must file this affidavit of candidacy." Well, it can't possibly mean all people that desire to be elected, because we know that we have write-in candidates, and that write-ins are a lawful way to get elected in the state of Minnesota. So we wanted to clarify that provision to say, "An eligible person who desires to be elected", signaling that there are other ways to, to gain an election certificate in the state of Minnesota and in the city of Bloomington. The other thing that we wanted to clean up related to the filing schedules in that the state periodically changes its schedules related to elections, and we had codified the specific dates and time periods in our charter. And as you know, there, as we're talking tonight, there's a bit of process and quite a bit of time in order to edit our charter. And so we wanted to make our provisions quite a bit more durable. And because state law governs these time periods anyway, it seemed more appropriate to relate directly to those schedules in state law. And then the other thing, the, that last sentence there that, that was added relates to a clarification in that we have two at-large positions in the city of Bloomington City Council. And we wanted to clarify that the position that somebody was seeking needed to be, that those two at-large positions were separate offices. You couldn't run for one, you, you, it's not sort of a pooled approach. So as I mentioned again, this is clarifications that came up during the preparation for the rollout of ranked choice voting. I will mention that we continue regularly to review our city charter and recently had some conversations with our new city clerk, who indicated that there were some other items that we could clean up in our election section and some of the other sections related to elections within the city charter. And we indicated that for our Charter Commission when we met in May. And so we intend to bring the Charter Commission back together in the fall and begin that process to clean those items up as well. So just as a preview, this is the beginning of some housekeeping related to our elections. Next slide, Amy. All right, so the next few items relate to some cleanup that are, that is arising due to some organizational changes in the legal department. So our, when our city charter was last edited, related to signing and signing authority and execution of instruments, the legal department did not have the deputy city attorney position. Similarly, we have some provisions in our merit system provision of our charter that also do not reflect this deputy city attorney position. So the next few items that I'll be talking about relate to some cleanup in order to accommodate the creation of that position within the structure of the legal department. Next slide, Amy. So as I mentioned, the merit board is one of those. Our merit system is in place, or we have a merit system in place in the city of Bloomington. And it has been around, as I understand it, for quite some time. It essentially creates a classified and unclassified service of employees. And we needed to add in the deputy city attorney position. In exploring the various bases for having employees that are pulled out of that merit system, we discussed many of them. One of them, for example, is that there is a general theory that the city manager and the city has its legal advisors, and they in particular should be allowed to select who those are. And that it should not be a part of the classified service for that reason. So that is the edit that's being proposed here in six point oh three of the city charter and specifically just, you know, again, a housekeeping clerical item. Next slide, Amy. The next two travel together, six point oh six and six point oh seven. This is again cleanup. And when we last brought this item before the Charter Commission, they discussed whether, the Charter Commission discussed how they wanted to limit the available signers that would be able to execute instruments. If you recall, historically, the city attorney was the only person that could sign contracts. And the only other person could be the acting city attorney theoretically. And so if I was to go out of town, it was very challenging to get documents signed. And so we wanted to clarify that and give some other people some delegated authority to make those signatures in my absence. So we did that a couple of years ago. And at that time, the Charter Commission felt strongly about including the assistant attorney position for a variety of reasons. But those reasons have largely, I think that there was some concern about sort of too broad of a delegation. I explained to them how well it has been working. And they ultimately made the recommendation to the city council to remove that assistant term there. And so the impact of this from a practical perspective is that now the deputy city attorneys, those new positions, as well as the people that report directly to them, the licensed assistant attorneys can both sign. Practically speaking, my delegation would likely be to only the deputies, but it gives us that freedom in the event those positions are vacant or what have you. Next slide, Amy. Again, the same kind of edit was made here. And this relates to the delegation of that authority, removing again that assistant term. Next slide, Amy. And so as a part of the conversation, when we made these edits back in 2018, was a desire to have a policy in place. And at that time, the city manager and then the city council ultimately approved a delegation policy. And it lays out the specific situations under which there can be somebody other than the city attorney executing documents. And so how this practically plays out is I schedule more than three consecutive days out of the office, business days, and Jamie approves it. And then I indicate to him who's going to be signing. And we work with the person that coordinates the signatures and who is also in the legal department, and it works quite well. It's a great opportunity to expose additional attorneys also to that signature process and help them deepen their understanding of how things operate as well. So I think that it's gone very well. There is also some provisions in this policy for what happens in the event that there is an unscheduled absence. Amy, next slide? So that is the general overview. Again, as you can see, they're largely clerical and housekeeping, trying to update our charter to be reflecting of the staffing that we have and the processes that we're using and the evolution of our efforts here in the city. There, as I mentioned, is a specific process set out in statute for how we will move forward through this. We are at the June 14th public hearing on these ordinances. There is a specific time provision by which the council is required to act. The council must take action on these items by July 14th. And once the council takes action, we will publish the ordinance in the Sun Current. And there is a process after that by which the public has the opportunity to petition for a referendum if they desire. And if that doesn't happen, after 90 days, the amendments become effective. Next slide? All right. Any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Manderscheid. Counsel, any questions on this? Any clarification, information?
All right.
I am not hearing any. So what we are going to do, as it says in the next steps, we're going to hold three separate public hearings on this to make sure that we follow the standard steps that we need to take to make sure that this does happen. So with that, I'm going to open item seven point three, a public hearing.
Amy, can you go back to slide three?
I'm going to open item seven point three, which is an ordinance to amend the city charter section 4.04. This is a public hearing. Ms. Chaney, do we have anyone on the line who wishes to speak to item seven point three?
Nora, do we have anyone on the line right now?
No one is on the line. You may proceed.
Thank you.
Counsel, no one's coming forward? Anyone here to speak to item seven point three? Very good. Item seven point three? Seeing no one coming forward, counsel, I'd look for a motion to close the public hearing. So moved?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Martin, second by Councilmember Coulter to close the public hearing, item seven point three. No further discussion by the counsel. Ms. Christensen?
Thank you. Beloga?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Lohman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries seven zero to close the public hearing on item seven point three. Counsel, any discussion, further questions? Anything? If not, I would look for action on item seven point three.
Mayor, I'm happy to make that motion. Councilmember Martin?
I will move that we approve the ordinance amending section 4.04 of the city charter relating to candidates for municipal elections.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Martin, second by Councilmember Carter to approve the ordinance change, amending sections 4.04 of the city charter. No further counsel discussion? Ms. Christensen?
Thank you. Beloga?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Lohman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries seven zero.
I will now open the public hearing on item seven point four, which is an ordinance to amend the city charter section six point zero three. Anyone looking to speak on item seven point, excuse me, seven point four, please come forward now? Ms. Chaney, do we have anyone online who wishes to speak to item seven point four?
Nora, is anyone on the line, please?
There is no one on the line. You may proceed.
Thank you.
Seeing no one coming forward, counsel, motion to close the public hearing?
So moved?
Second. We have a motion by Councilmember Coulter, second by Councilmember Martin to close the public hearing on item seven point four. No further public comment. Ms. Christensen?
Thank you. Beloga?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Lohman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries seven zero.
Counsel, any further discussion on this? If not, look for action.
I'm happy to make the motion. I'm afraid if I minimize WebEx on my iPad, I'll get kicked out of the meeting again and inconvenience everyone again. So if I could, all right. This is seven point four. Okay. Mayor, I will move to approve an ordinance amending section six point oh three of the city charter relating to the merit system.
Second. We have a motion by Councilmember Coulter, second by Councilmember Martin on item seven point three to amend section six point zero three of the city charter. Hearing no further discussion, Ms. Christensen?
Thank you. Beloga?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Lohman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries seven zero.
I will now open item seven point five, which is a public hearing on an ordinance to amend city charter sections six point zero six and six point zero seven. Anyone wishing to speak on item seven point five? Ms. Chaney, do we have anyone online who wishes to speak to seven point five?
Nora, is anyone on the line to speak?
No one is on the line, ma'am.
Thank you.
Seeing no one coming forward, I'd look for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved?
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Beloga, second by Councilmember Carter to close the public hearing on item seven point five. No further counsel discussion. Ms. Christensen?
Thank you. Beloga?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Lohman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries seven zero. The public hearing on seven point five is closed. Counsel, any discussion on this? If not, I'd look for action.
Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to make the motion.
Councilmember Beloga?
Move to approve ordinance amending sections six point oh six and six point oh seven of the city charter to allow certain employees to execute instruments and approve contracts.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Beloga, second by Councilmember Carter to amend sections point zero six and six point zero seven of the city charter. Hearing no further counsel discussion, Ms. Christensen?
Thank you. Beloga?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Lohman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries seven zero. Thank you very much.
Moving on to item seven point six, which is another public hearing. And this is regarding the vacation of public right-of-way and public drainage, utility, ponding, flooding, sidewalks, and bikeway easements, at 3701 American Boulevard East and 8101 36th Avenue South. Good evening, Mr. Keel. Thanks for sticking with us this late.
Good evening, Mayor and counsel. This item is, as the mayor indicated, the vacation of right-of-ways and of various easements at the Apple Tree Square Development south of American Boulevard and east of 34th Avenue. This is needed to facilitate development on that property. With this vacation, development would proceed, and new easements and right-of-way appropriate for the development would be dedicated by the developer. So we're coming with a recommendation of approval.
Counsel, questions of Mr. Keel? Pretty straightforward vacation of public right-of-way. Hearing no counsel questions, I will call this public hearing and open it on item seven point six. It's a vacation of public right-of-way and public drainage, utility, ponding, flooding, floodage, sidewalks, and bikeway easements at 3701 American Boulevard East and 8101 36th Avenue South. Anyone wishing to speak on this item? Ms. Chaney, is there anyone on the line?
Nora, do we have anyone on the line right now?
No one's on the line. You may proceed.
Thank you. And Mayor, I believe this is our last opportunity for comment. So I will let Nora go.
Yes, you may.
Nora, that is all the public comment that we have this evening, so you may disconnect.
Thank you very much and have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nora. Counsel, we've got no one coming forward. I'd look for a motion to close the public hearing on item seven point six. So moved?
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Martin, a second by Councilmember Carter to close the public hearing on item seven point six. No further counsel discussion. Ms. Christensen?
Thank you. Beloga?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Lohman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries seven zero to close the public hearing on item seven point six.
Counsel, any questions, comments, or if not, I'd look for action on item seven point six?
Mayor, I can take that motion.
Councilmember Martin?
Thank you, Mayor. I will move that, in the interest of the public, to approve the vacation of public right-of-way and public drainage, utility, ponding, floodage, sidewalk, and bikeway easements within Lot Three, Block One, Apple Tree Square, First Edition, Outlet A, Apple Tree Square, Fourth Edition, and Lot One, Block One, Apple Tree Square, Fourth Edition, with the adoption of this ordinance approving the vacation of said public right-of-way and easements.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Martin, second by Councilmember Carter to adopt item seven point six as stated. No further questions or comments? Ms. Christensen?
Thank you. Beloga?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Lohman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you much, Mr. Keel. Moving on, item seven point seven, which is an ordinance for stormwater pond aeration permit code amendments. And this was continued from our June 7th, 2021 meeting and actually continued from the meeting before that as well. And we've been discussing this a while, trying to come to consensus on this. Mr. Brian Greedle from our Water Resources Management World is with us tonight. Good evening. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Thank you. Yes, we're here again this evening to talk a little bit more about the pond aeration ordinance updates. Amy, if you could advance it once for me? Just kind of a recap of where we've been. Originally, we were contacted by the public in July of 2020, where we identified an inconsistency in the ordinance. We've been through a couple of different public hearings and worked with Sustainability Commission as well as city council to work on updating some of the ordinance language, primarily around the question of whether or not we will allow aeration to occur in public ponds. Next slide, please. So as you may recall, option one then is a minor ordinance amendment basically stating that aeration is going to be prohibited on public ponds. This is generally consistent with the way the ordinance was originally written or the intent of the original ordinance, anyway. It also provides a little cleanup of some additional language. Option two then is more a major ordinance update and would basically allow private entities the ability to install aeration equipment on public ponds. Next slide, please. So one of the tasks that we left with last time was to take a good look at what a pilot program might look like. You know, how might we be able to implement something that continues to provide opportunity while still trying to mitigate some of the concerns that we identified? So the ability for us to identify the impact of aerators on ponds is basically done by evaluating our existing data that we've collected. So monitoring on these ponds has been ongoing since about 2009. Through consultation with the University of Minnesota, our process has been updated. So currently, there's 29 ponds being monitored for 13 different water quality variables. So out of those 29 ponds, there are four that currently have mechanical aerators in them. And looking at the data, the effectiveness of the aerators for reducing nutrients is unknown at this point. There's just too many variables for us to be able to sift that out. And so basically, using our information that we have available to us, you know, we can use this kind of as a guide, but it's certainly not, you know, a full-scale research project or anything. And so some of the results that we looked at or the ponds with the aerators in them did show an increase in total suspended solids. So this is basically just dirt and other things that kind of stay suspended within the water column. Didn't matter whether it was a fountain or a bubbler. They both seemed to kind of have the same impact. And we believe that this is most likely due to the mechanical movement of the water. It's moving water around, so it's moving the suspended solids around as well. Phosphorus concentrations were a little less clear in the pond that, so in a pond that has a bubbler device in it. has a bubbler device in it, you know, that one was showing decreases in signs of phosphorus. So that was good. However, the one with the fountain in the pond actually showed higher concentrations of phosphorus than a similar pond. But there's also some other management strategies that go on in that pond as well with aquatic plant management. And so it's not an apples-to-apples comparison. Next slide, please. So our pilot program framework kind of builds on this concept that as the city, we're really here to, you know, to do management and not do research. And so to fully carry out a research project is, you know, got a great deal of resources with it. But we do have room to, you know, for further assessment, and the data collected can be used to support these ongoing research initiatives that we have talked about in the past. And so what we're proposing is a five-year pilot project to assess the impact of an aerator and help support these ongoing research initiatives around stormwater pond management. The Winchester Pond is a good candidate for this aeration assessment because it has past data, so dating back to two thousand nine. So there's a robust data set behind it. So we know, we have a good idea of what it was. And so now, if the aeration is installed, we can monitor that for a period of five years using the same criteria and the same methods and be able to do kind of a pre and post-analysis on that. So that would inform our future management decisions. Other ponds that could be included in this, I think, would be defined by those other twenty-eight other ponds then that we have some pre-data on. So we would be able to compare and contrast kind of what goes on before and after. Then the proposal for the Winchester Pond Group then would be for them to provide the aeration equipment to the city. And then the city would in turn operate and maintain that equipment, along with continuing to collect the water quality data. Couple of the identified areas of concern. Equity was a topic that we talked about quite a bit. So in the right situation, aeration is certainly a tool in the water quality toolbox. However, focusing solely on aeration for improving water quality, it doesn't really encompass all of the concerns and all of the issues that we face for improving equity and water quality and the challenges that we have under the full scope of water management and the environment and people. So to improve equity and water quality and the ability for residents to participate, we believe that we need to kind of zoom out and have a kind of a larger view, kind of a bigger toolbox, if you will. So we did have a Let's Talk Bloomington survey out. Only ten people completed the survey, but what it did indicate was that, you know, the people who were interested were also generally willing to participate. But what they didn't have a good idea of how to participate. And so we've been working on kind of developing a water quality participation concept, including things like, you know, recognizing the work that are done by residents, providing, you know, opportunities for community groups, education and training opportunities, and kind of normalizing this like healthy ecological landscapes. And so this is currently a work in progress, and aeration may find its way into this framework. But both the voices, you know, of the community, as well as the proposed analysis, should determine if aeration is a useful and needed tool. Next one, Amy. So a couple others. Liability. So as far as the pilot project goes, you know, if we enter into a contract for the use of the aeration equipment, so any of the damages associated with the use would be covered under the city's insurance, as long as it's in the city's care, custody, or control. Encroachment was something that we talked about quite a bit. And so with the city operating the system, you know, this essentially mitigates the private encroachment issue that we talked about. We're currently already collecting data on these ponds anyway, so we would just continue to do so. With, as far as maintenance activity goes, if we are involved with the project, you know, obviously, we can coordinate any maintenance. And then costs are a combination of the upfront capital costs, the operating costs, and then the ongoing maintenance costs. So electric service would need to be brought into the property by Excel. That process would need to be finished up by a licensed electrician to finish up the panel and get everything wired. There is the possibility that we could have a solar option. Those options are typically a little bit more expensive on the upfront cost, but then your operating costs are less. So there may be a balance point that we have there. Overall, we're looking at about five thousand dollars or so for upfront capital costs, about two hundred fifty dollars a year in annual operating costs, and another two hundred dollars a year for annual maintenance costs. So right around seven thousand dollars over a five-year period. Grant funding may be available for some of this work, so we could certainly look at something like that. You know, pursuing the grant applications may kind of delay getting this, could potentially delay the implementation of it, just chasing around grant funds for a little while. But any city-related costs then are proposed to come from the stormwater utility. So staff is continuing to recommend option one, which proposes to clarify that aeration equipment is generally prohibited on the publicly-owned ponds. And so this is pretty consistent with the three guidelines that you see here under the existing ordinance. Next one, Amy. Just to quickly brief, quickly skim over the highlights of the updates. So we did do some updates on the definitions. We did work on fixing the kind of the nuance that was in section sixteen eleven. And then we also reduced the number of abutting property owners from seventy, from a hundred percent to seventy-five percent that need to agree to aeration. Next slide. We changed the permit process just a little bit, so a permit can be extended in increments of three years rather than annually. And then some clarity around the exemptions for public agencies, as well as the private ponds without storm sewer connections. And with that, I have a suggested motion with option one. I also have suggested options with, for option two. But at this point, I would be happy to take questions or comments.
Council, questions of Mr. Greedle on this? Chime in if you've got one. Our three remote folks, I'm not seeing the complete picture here.
Chime in then, Mayor.
Councilmember Loman?
So I want to thank staff here. If you go back to that equity piece there, slide piece there, just wanted to have a good look at that again. And I, my understanding was, is that, here we go. So it sounds like to me that in terms of the equity piece, it sounds like we need to, this would be one tool in a broader conversation as we're looking at doing this research. So we might look at other, as we look at other areas, as we're getting ready to do this, that we would open that up to that. Is my understanding correct with that?
Mr. Greedle?
Mayor and councilmembers, yes, I believe your understanding is correct. So when we look at it, you know, not everybody lives either on a water body or next to a water body. And in some cases, they live quite a ways away from a water body. And so, you know, aeration may not necessarily be applicable in some of those instances. However, there are many other ways, such as, you know, the adopted drain program or other ways that these properties are connected to water resources. And so we just believe that, you know, the tools in the toolbox have to be expanded. We can't get too focused on one item.
Thank you. This makes a lot of sense, and I appreciate how you handle the other concerns with this. So yeah, I'm good to go with the option one. I'm ready to support that. I'm not sure where other councilmembers are at, but I appreciate what you guys have done to update.
Any additional questions, Councilmember Loman?
Oh, pump stop.
No? Okay. Council, anything additional? Councilmember Coulter?
Excuse me, just a quick one. I, you know, I, we've had a lot of conversation about this, perhaps more than we needed to at times. But I would say, you know, this, I think option one is, it's a good compromise. It's maybe not where I would go if, you know, I were the sole decision-maker. And I think we're all grateful that I am not. So I, my concern is that in a couple of years, we're going to have more folks coming back wanting to participate in pond aeration, which is why I support an option two. So I just, you know, let's be mindful of that. And if it does indeed increase in popularity, and this is something that folks want to pursue on a larger scale, let's be prepared for how we want to discuss that and handle that.
Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. So just to clarify, if we were to go with option one, would that mean that we would be moving forward with the pilot program?
Mayor and councilmembers, yes. That would be, that's the idea.
Okay. And so then you said that there are already four ponds with aeration equipment in them that we're monitoring data, we're collecting data on. Plus, we would add the Winchester Pond Group. And then would we, and then you said that there are twenty-something other ponds that would be eligible because we collect data already, correct? Just want to make sure.
That's correct, yes.
Okay. And so how would, like, would we, would the city recruit, like, how would we include those other neighborhoods with ponds that could be eligible? Would we do outreach and communications and try to get more ponds included in this pilot?
Mayor and councilmembers, at this point, we're not planning on actively recruiting any additional ponds. We feel like the ponds that we have identified, you know, have an ecologically, an ecologically similar pond that we can use for comparison analysis. And, you know, as we've talked about in the past, not all of these ponds are alike. And so, you know, we feel like we have a pretty good representative sample of what's going on and can make some informed decisions. That's not to say that, you know, if there was a lot of interest and we could find value in that to help support what we're doing, that we could certainly consider it.
Okay. And then when you looked at the data that was collected on the four that already have aeration equipment, you said that that was kind of inconclusive for the most part. There was some improvement in phosphorus levels, but then one pond with a fountain looked like it didn't improve. Did I understand that correctly?
Yeah. So, Mayor and councilmembers, yes. So I briefed, though, I mean, there's a lot more detail to it if you really want to get into it. But, I mean, overall, the total suspended solids, so there are two factors that we really look at: total suspended solids and our phosphorus concentrations. Total suspended solids, essentially across the board, aerator, whether it be a bubbler or a fountain, pretty consistent, higher TSS numbers. For phosphorus, the pond with the bubbler in it showed a lower concentration of phosphorus when compared to its ecological kind of paired watersheds study, if you will. The fountain showed no difference. And in fact, the fountain, the pond with the fountain actually had higher phosphorus concentrations in it than its kind of ecological counterpart with no aeration. But the pond with the aerator in it also uses like aquatic herbicides to manage the aquatic plants. And aquatic plants are super beneficial to these wetland systems. They soak up nutrients, and if you wipe them out, they just re-release their nutrients into the water column. And so that's most likely why the data points to the higher phosphorus concentration. It probably is not related to the fountain.
Interesting. Okay. So and then was this just looking at one-year data or multiple years? And I guess I'm asking these questions because I'm questioning how much we're really going to learn over this pilot project. And are we going to have, do you think we're going to have conclusive results at the end of five years? Or are we just kind of doing something to, my fear is that we've come up with a solution to kind of give one neighborhood group what they want, but in reality, we don't want to allow this. You know what I mean? Like, I'm afraid that we have a workaround going on, to be quite honest. And so I just don't want to spend, I don't want to like, I don't know, it feels, I would almost rather have it like all or nothing. Like, I'd rather either open it up for five years and anybody who wants to do it can do it, like option two, or go back to just saying, we don't want this to happen. Like, I'm not a huge fan of the pilot project, to be quite honest. I feel like it's a little bit of a workaround to appease a community group. But at the same time, you know, if my colleagues on council here feel strongly going with option one, then I can, I can support that. Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate all your work and thinking on this. It's been a lot.
Thank you.
Councilmember Beloga and then Councilmember Nelson. Councilmember Beloga?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Brian. So we called this a pilot project, but if the ordinance does not appear in my reading to limit any other applicants. So if this ordinance with option one is passed, then other applicants may come forward and apply. Is that a correct reading or am I incorrectly reading the ordinance proposed?
Mr. Greedle?
Mayor and councilmembers, you know, it was our thought that if additional ponds wanted to be included, and they were part of those other ponds that already have established water quality data behind them, that we could consider those for inclusion.
So if I live on a pond that we do not have that level of data associated with it, then I would be percluded?
Mayor and councilmember Beloga, we wouldn't have any way to compare the impact of the aeration system if we don't have data from beforehand. So if the aerator goes out there, we wouldn't have anything to compare it to from before it was implemented.
And of all the ponds that could potentially apply, how many of those are there and how many of those do we have adequate data for comparison?
There are twenty-nine ponds total that we have information on. Four of them currently have aerators, minus Winchester Pond. So there's twenty-three, twenty-four?
But we have more than twenty-four ponds in the community, do we not?
Mayor and councilmembers, yes, we have well over three hundred ponds.
So we're going to preclude the other roughly two hundred and seventy ponds from applying? Is that, is that a correct understanding then?
Mayor and councilmembers, yes. That's, we don't have the information to implement a pilot project that focuses on research on ponds that we don't have water quality information on.
The issue that I'm getting to, and maybe it's a lack of understanding, is that when I read the ordinance, it does not say that this is a pilot project for research. So, Brian, am I reading that incorrectly?
Mayor and councilmembers, the ordinance update itself does not discuss the pilot program. So the pilot program is something that came out of the public hearing in May of this year. And so our proposal is to run this pilot program with the Winchester Pond Group, who initially contacted us about this. They have interest in it. They have offered to partner with us in the past. So our option...
I understand how we got here, and thanks for the refresher on that. But it, when I read the ordinance, it is, it doesn't seem to say what our intention is here. And that is, is to run a pilot and test program. If I read that ordinance, I'd say, great, I can go and apply, and then be told, no, that I don't qualify for reasons that the ordinance does not so specifically state, in my opinion. So what I'm after is, is am I reading the ordinance incorrectly?
Mayor and councilmembers, it's my opinion that the ordinance reads that aeration in public ponds is prohibited and not allowed, so not allowed by a private entity. There is an exception in there that allows the city to implement aeration in public water bodies.
Okay, thank you.
And I don't know if it's helpful at all, Councilmember Beloga, but I don't know that the ordinance would be the place to put something like a pilot project. Would that be correct? I don't know if it would be correct in the ordinance, or the ordinance would allow that to happen, and then the discussion would be beyond that.
Well, you know, I'm looking at maybe too finitely, that if I'm interested in doing something, I'm going to look at the governing rules and regulations, which in this instance is the ordinance. And it says what it says. And I'm afraid that people could interpret it incorrectly. that people could interpret it incorrectly as I have. And, uh, you know, the, the way it's really, uh, structured, uh, I think, uh, Councilmember Carter, uh, expressed it, uh, uh, quite well, is it seems as if it's tailored to the Winchester Pond and a very few other limited ponds potentially, but that the majority of the water bodies within the city would be precluded. And that seems to, I, I have a problem with that.
Understood. All right.
I'll, uh, I'll pass to, uh, anyone else then. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Um, based on some of what I've heard, I'm wondering if it makes sense to look at option two. I've heard some people speak to that, that they might prefer that route. And i- in my opinion, it might make sense for us to either formally or informally take action on option two, um, to see if that's the preferred route, to allow everyone to do it, um, before taking any action on option one and/or differentiating between which one you want. The, I mean, does it make sense to quickly look at option two again and just make sure I understand fully what that does? And my understanding is that sort of takes the city out of it, allows neighborhoods to do that through a permit process and a renewal process, uh, with a requirement that certain data is provided. So, we would continue to get the data, potentially if more neighborhoods wanted to do it, we would get potentially more data, um, and the city would not be involved, uh, in terms of maintenance or anything like that. Am I, am I understanding that difference correctly?
Mr. Greedle, do you have a summary of option two?
Uh, Mayor and councilmember Nelson, I, I think that was a, a pretty, pretty good summary. So, yes. So, option two, uh, essentially providing private entities the ability to, um, aerate in public ponds. And so, with that comes, um, you know, kind of our, our liability discussion that we talked about, uh, so the difference between a waiver and, and insurance requirements. Uh, we also need to amend the encroachment, city's encroachment policy. So, the city is, you know, pretty, um, firm on, on the encroachment policy, so that needs to get amended. Um, but it does open it up to essentially everybody. Uh, we, you know, there's no, um, yeah, there wouldn't be, there wouldn't be anybody that would be precluded, I guess, so to speak. Um, yeah, and overall, it's managed through a permit system. And so, and that, and that kind of follows some, some of the similar requirements that I talked about earlier, that the seventy-five percent of the people around the pond, uh, need to, um, you know, need, need to, uh, agree to it. And basically, that, all the costs associated with that are, are borne upon that interested resident group. And then they turn around, they collect a little bit of information, they turn around and resubmit that to the city, and, and we use that to, uh, help push, um, future pond ma- pond management decisions.
Thank you for the summary.
Councilmember Loman?
Of course, my problem with that is, uh, for those folks who are living around ponds and can't afford to do it, basically, or essentially, you can't do anything if you can't afford to do that. So, I might entertain a third option, which would be, um, as, as I understand, Councilmember Carter put forward, uh, which would be my second option, would be to just eliminate the, the Winchester Pond neighborhood group, uh, to install, uh, criteria types of Winchester, uh, pond as a five-year pilot. Eliminate that whole pilot, uh, policy, then we could move forward with what staff has recommended, um, originally. So, that'd be a third option that I'd be interested to see where, where folks are at on that.
Well, now we're up to three options.
Can I ask?
And, uh, Councilmember Carter, do we have a fourth?
No.
Oh, okay.
Uh, but thank you, Mayor. Um, so, if we were to go with option two, where we did allow private entities to install aeration equipment, um, via public permit, would we still be collecting then data and tracking it? And if five, in five years, we're looking at the data and we're seeing, "Wow," like phosphorus levels are not looking good in all these ponds that have aeration equipment, we could say, "Okay, we're no longer going to allow these to be in the public, or in the public ponds, and we're asking people to remove them." And it, we could, we could go back.
Mayor and councilmembers, yes, I think we could go back. Um, I think by the time we get to that point where a resident group has invested money and has owned and operated this, and then to turn around five years later and tell them that, "Oh, I'm sorry, you have to take it out," um, I think that's going to be a challenging conversation. Um, personally, I, I, I guess it's, it's my own, it's my own opinion that these, that these stormwater ponds, you know, the issues that, that we see out there with aquatic vegetation and smells and things of that nature are not going to be addressed by aeration. Um, it's, I know that it's marketed as kind of this cure-all. It decreases the amount of sediment in your pond. It cures all the smells. It gets rid of aquatic vegetation. And in some instances, it may do that. And in a water quality realm, when we are, um, talking about wastewater treatment or potable water treatment, and we talk about aeration within those systems, I mean, we're talking about, like, really turbulent aeration, not these, like, fountains or little bubblers in, in a pond. So...
Well, I will say, I did like your comment, um, in your initial presentation around, um, creating a toolkit, like, zooming out and actually creating a toolkit of, of a variety of ways that residents can address, well, like, water quality issues in the ponds nearby their homes. And so, um, I'm, I'm definitely a much bigger fan of that approach, um, versus, um, spending so much time on one that we, that probably will have very limited, if any, benefit. So, thank you.
So, where do we go from here, council? Um, we, we started with two options. I think we kind of moved up to three, and I'm not hearing a general consensus on any of them. And in fact, we're, I think, headed back in the direction that we, was, was originally brought forward by, uh, uh, staff as we started talking about this. So, um, thoughts on this? Uh, I mean, I, I, I will say, I mean, I've always been a bit skeptical about this, primarily because I tend to trust our staff, experts. And when I hear staff say, "This, these, these fountains will not improve water quality to a degree," I mean, it, it doesn't make sense. And, uh, if that's the case, and, and again, I've known Mr. Greedle for a while now and, and believe that he's an expert in his field, and I, I guess I trust what he's saying. And just envisioning of all the different possibilities that, where, where something like this could go sideways, whether it's the, um, you know, the, the electrical installation, or, uh, neighbors moving away and no longer being interested in doing this type of thing, or, um, you know, just, it, just not, not being something they want to continue doing. I just don't know that this is something we want to dive into. I mean, I, I liked the idea of a, of a, uh, pilot project, but I agree with Councilmember Beloga. I mean, it, it doesn't, I don't know that it really feels like a pilot project in general, and, and Councilmember Carter's, uh, comment about how it seems like a bit of a workaround for a, a squeaky wheel that we need to get a little grease on because they keep squeaking. And so, I just don't know, um, if, uh, if any of these options that we have formally in front of us are the, are the, uh, the answer, or if we need to go back to what we originally talked about, or if, uh, there is something in between. But, but frankly, I would like to, I would like to put this to bed tonight. We've talked about this for enough time now, and if we can put this to bed tonight, one way or another, and move forward, I would greatly appreciate it. So...
Well, Mayor, I'm ready to, to move my option three, which would be what staff has originally, uh, recommended. And I think you have succinctly, uh, put it forward. I, I, I think we got to trust our staff on this. And, and while I, I, I would like to see a pilot pro- project, I think that needs to, that's maybe something they can bring up in a, in a year or two, uh, down the line. But I think where we're at right today, I think we need to go with what staff had recommended. So, I'm happy to make that motion, um, uh, which I think is mostly right here, here. I think I'll move to adopt, uh, an ordinance amending, uh, chapter sixteen selection, uh, section sixteen-point-three, sixteen-eleven, and sixteen-twelve of Bloomington Code related to storm water pond aeration permit and removal of the storm water pond aeration policy and procedure. I'll just stop there, because I'm not sure there's anything else to be added to it.
We have a motion. Do we have a second for that? We have a motion and a second. A motion by Councilmember, um, Loman, and a second by Councilmember Carter to, uh, adopt a, a motion as stated. And, uh, I look to Ms. Manderscheid and make sure that it was stated correctly and understandably?
Yes, I was following along. I think that works. I'll double-check the staff if that works. And it's clear?
Uh, no, that works for us.
Okay, then, uh, the record showed that city manager and staff are, are, we're okay with that motion, and just to be sure that we do have that. Council, any additional discussion? Councilmember Coulter?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just going to clarify that, um, I'm not going to support this motion as it's worded. Um, I, I mean, this came forward because a group of neighbors wanted to do this. And I, I just, I think foreclosing even the option of a pilot project to me is, is not, I mean, I, I think it, it's just not something I'm comfortable supporting. I, I was okay with the pilot project allowing an exploration of this in a concrete way, um, because I, you know, I mean, that's why I came forward in the first place, because a group of neighbors wanted to do this. And I, I'm, I, you know, a lot of folks put in a lot of time and effort on this, including, including us and including staff. And, um, it, it just feels like we're, we're, I think, kind of unnecessarily shutting the door on, on something neighbors could explore. So, um, if that's the motion that we're moving forward tonight, then I'm not going to support it.
Thank you. And I will say that is a motion that we're moving forward tonight. I won't say that, who knows if that's the motion we're moving forward tonight. Council, any further discussion on this? Councilmember Martin?
Uh, yeah, just quickly, I'll say, I echo some of, uh, Councilmember Coulter's thoughts there, and I'll be voting no on this, just because last time, after a lot of torturous discussion, we said, "Go work with the group, put together a pilot project, let's get this done next time." Um, and we're, sometimes we do that. We take off in a random direction, uh, when stuff comes back. So, yeah.
Very good. Any additional discussion? Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so, just one more clarifying question. So, when you talked about zooming out and having, um, kind of more of a toolkit for residents to, uh, look at in terms of improving the water quality of the ponds around their homes, um, is that something that is moving forward or an idea that staff have?
Uh, Mayor and co- Mayor and councilmembers, uh, so, that is currently in concept right now. So, it is, um, you know, some ideas that we've put together, that we, um, have shared with Sustainability Commission, that we've shared with Park and Re- that we're kind of, you know, sharing internally, trying to kind of get a gauge on, on what we're going to, on what we need to do. I think the biggest hurdle for us is, you know, engaging with the community, so we can listen to the community and understand what the needs, wants, barriers, and, and kind of all of those things out there, they are, if we're to design a program that is indeed intended to help empower them to participate in these type of things. So, at this point, it's a concept.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Anything further? Councilmember Beloga?
Uh, thank you, yes. Uh, so, this really, uh, gets us back to where we were, that, uh, only the city or those other private entities who fully own that pond, who is not connected to the sewer system, uh, can do a, uh, aeration on a pond. Is that correct? You know, in summary?
Mr. Greedle?
Uh, Mayor, Councilmember Beloga, yes, that is correct.
So, uh, option two, and, you know, from, from my part, if, if, uh, the neighborhood group strongly feels that, uh, you know, they buy the Kool-Aid, so to speak, that, uh, uh, they do aeration and there's going to be terrific results, um, that is their choice. And, and, uh, if we allow them to do that, knowing that it's their choice, they're responsible, uh, and that if there is not improvement in the water quality over a period of years, that then they, uh, may not have their permit, uh, renewed. Uh, yes, it may be a difficult, uh, conversation, but I think it's worthwhile having. And I favor option two as a result. Um, so, uh, I guess I'm just muddying the water a little bit more here, but, uh, that's where I'm at.
Alrighty then. Any other comments? Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, so, going back to my original comments, um, I'm really fine going either we prohibit it totally, or we allow people to apply for permits. And it's not just, I, I'm just not okay with what's in front of us right now, where we, um, only allow, you know, thirty ponds in our community, twenty-nine of which we collect data on, and then one, which is a neighborhood group, that, I'm just not comfortable with that. So, um, if the majority of council did want to move forward with, um, option two, which would open it up for, um, our residents to apply, I would be comfortable moving in that direction. I'm just not, I think we need to, I'm, I want us to move in one direction or the other, not have the pilot in between.
All right. So, we still have a motion and a second on the table. On the motion as stated, and I think everybody's clear as the motion is stated, correct? Any further discussion? Hearing done. Ms. Christensen?
Thank you. Beloga?
Nay.
Carter?
No.
Coulter?
No.
Loman?
Aye.
Martin?
Uh, no.
Nelson?
Nay.
Mayor Bussie?
And I. Seeing that, uh, the motion fails on a five-to-two vote. So, what other options do we have? What other options do we want to try here? Councilmember Martin?
Uh, Mayor, I could support Councilmember Carter's idea about opening it up.
I would entertain, uh, a motion then, one way or another. Councilmember Nelson brought it up originally, or we have heard it from a couple of other folks as well?
Amy, can you?
We'll, we'll need a motion.
Go up to option.
For option two.
Keep going.
I'm happy to make that motion.
Back up.
Or would you like to?
Here's option two for, suggest a motion for option two.
Mayor, I will move that we adopt an ordinance amending chapter one, chapter sixteen, appendix A, and the schedule of civil fines for administrative offenses under chapter one, article two of the Bloomington City Code related to storm water pond aeration permits, and amending the encroachment policy and removal of the storm water pond aeration policy and procedure.
Second.
We've got a motion by Councilmember Martin and a second by Councilmember Carter on option two as written and stated. Further council discussion on this? If not, Ms. Christensen?
Mayor, I do have one thing to say before we go.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, Councilmember Loman, I apologize. Councilmember Loman?
Yeah. I, I will not be supporting this. Uh, just to make the opportunity available to somebody does not make it in and of itself equitable. Um, uh, and I, I've said that before. Uh, uh, folks will not be able to get this together. I know that, that the Winchester group said that they try. I'm skeptical, um, that they'll be able to pull that off. Uh, for those reasons and many other reasons that I stated before, I think, uh, moving down this road of encroachment is, is bad for the city. So, I will not be, uh, supporting this, uh, moving forward. I was fine with a, with a pilot, uh, but, uh, I cannot support this as a script.
Any other comments? Ms. Christensen?
Thank you. Beloga?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Loman?
No.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Nay.
Mayor Bussie?
Nay. Motion carries four to three for option two.
I got one more.
And we're going to need, uh, Councilmember Martin, a summary publication?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I will move that we adopt a resolution authorizing summary publication of the ordinance to allow private entities the ability to install aeration equipment and ponds on publicly-owned properties attached to the staff report.
We have a motion by Councilmember Martin, a second by Councilmember Carter for summary publication.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, just a reminder that summary publication requires five votes of the council. Just thought that was timely since we had a four-to-three vote.
No further discussion. Ms. Christensen?
Thank you. Beloga?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Loman?
Nay.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries six-one for summary publication on item seven-point-seven. Thank you to staff for their, your work on this. This has been a long road, and I appreciate, uh, the information you've provided and the work that you've put in and the different, This has been a long road, and I appreciate, uh, the information you've provided and the work that you put in and the different, uh, uh, options and, and details you've brought to us. It's, uh, it's been a lot, I know it has, and appreciate your, uh, willingness and your ability to, to put all the information together for us and, and lead us through this. So, thank you much.
Thank you.
We can move to item eight, which is our organizational business. But before we do so, council, I'm looking at the count, the clock, and we are just before, ten minutes before eleven o'clock. Mr. Verbrugge, uh, if we extend it to eleven fifteen, would we be able to get our work done this evening?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, I think so. Uh, the question I would ask is if you want to have a discussion ever so brief as it may be for eight point one. I've already planned to bring it back on July nineteenth as a discussion. Uh, I sent some additional information to the city council earlier today. So I appreciate if, uh, council didn't have a lot of time to review that information. Uh, and, and maybe that time just allows you to have some more questions that you can forward and help frame that up. In the meantime, we're gonna do some more work. I think the, the, it just fits in with where we're at in our budget process right now, given the new issues that, uh, came up as a result of the treasury guidance. So, I, I would say that if you want, we can, uh, just go ahead and, um, uh, continue eight one to July nineteenth. And, uh, that'll work for, for our purposes. I don't think there's any urgency there. Uh, and eight point two, I think that we can move relatively quickly.
If we could, uh, do that with eight point one, could we also ask, uh, any information or any additional information you compiled, get to us in the, the, the Friday information?
You bet.
And anything else, is, is everyone comfortable with that? Questions, uh, remotely? Nope, okay, then I would move that we table item eight point one until July nineteenth for the discussion then.
Beloga, second.
Motion and a second by Councilmember Beloga to table eight point one until July nineteenth. No further council discussion, Ms. Christensen?
Thank you. Beloga?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries seven zero. Item eight point two is the appointment of the task force looking at earned, sick, and safe leave. Mr. Verbrugge?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Uh, as council will recall, uh, but for the benefit of the viewers, if any are remaining at this hour. The, um, council directed that a working group be put together, uh, to draft an ordinance for council consideration related to earned, sick, and safe leave. This would be, uh, similar to what's been done in the cities of Duluth and St. Paul and Minneapolis, where they have adopted ordinances requiring, uh, businesses operating within those cities to provide, um, some level of, uh, earned, sick, and safe leave to employees. Uh, especially, uh, focused on businesses that perhaps were not, uh, providing any leave benefits. We've had a couple of discussions with council about, uh, the composition of the working group and, and, uh, the type of representation across the community that we're, uh, hoping to see. And, uh, we have brought forward, uh, eight names, and actually, ninth was added today. You have the eight names in your report. Just a reminder, the additional information, uh, provided you today would add Brittany Milan, who is the owner of Elevé Performing Arts Center. Uh, I hope I said that right, it's French, I'm not great with French. And, uh, uh, the, the thing that I would ask, uh, the indulgence I would ask of council is, uh, I still have, uh, two, uh, representatives that would, we would like to add who were participants in our Small Business Emergency Assistance Loan Program. I'm still waiting on confirmation. You know, we were, we were waiting to get the meeting dates handwritten out, so people could make a commitment. And with small businesses, obviously, getting them to be able to commit, uh, to something like this when they're running a small business is a little challenging. What I'd like to do, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, if you approve the nine names that are in front of you, uh, uh, this evening, is to allow us to invite a couple more uh, of those participants to attend that first meeting. And then we'll come back after the first meeting and have the council ratify their participation as additional members to the working group. Happy to answer any questions that you have.
Questions, council? The only question, I guess, that I have, I, I was glad, glad to hear, uh, Brittany's name, because the group is looking awfully male right now, and I'm hoping that we could have some additional, uh, diversity in that group ultimately. Additional questions? Councilmember Beloga?
Uh, thank you. Uh, I do not understand or know Main Street Alliance, I don't know, or what that is, and there's no information about that in the packet.
Uh, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, the Main Street Alliance is an organization that represents small business interests. Uh, and, um, they, uh, represent, they've been in contact and, and have, uh, membership here in the city of Bloomington. This was a recommendation from, uh, other members of the council as possible inclusion in the organization.
And, uh, so they're not Bloomington-based, but they represent Bloomington businesses, is that what I understood?
Correct.
Very good, thank you.
Additional questions? Councilmember Coulter?
Thank you, Mayor, I don't actually have any questions, I just wanted to, uh, make the comment that I'm, I'm actually really, really pleased with this group. I, I, there are some folks that I, I know on the group and some that I don't, but, um, I think they're all, um, from my understanding, thoughtful individuals who will work in good faith and, and I think put together a really, really good product. Um, and so I'm, I'm, I'm not gonna pretend I will agree with all of them on every single issue, but that's probably a good thing. Um, I'm, I'm really excited to, to see them get to work, and I'm glad we're moving on this.
Any other comments?
Uh, Mayor, uh, so, uh, from a restaurant standpoint, um, I know, uh, manager, we had a conversation about that, is one of those two representatives? Um, I didn't catch the, the last person, I didn't see that in the mail. Uh, are we gonna have representation other than from the chamber on, uh, from a restaurant type, uh?
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, Councilmember Loman, uh, the two that I'm awaiting confirmation on both have, uh, restaurant operations in the city of Bloomington.
Very good. Any additional questions? I have to agree with Councilmember Coulter, it looks like a, it looks like a good working group. I'm interested to, to, uh, hear their discussions on all of this and see what the ultimate outcome might be.
And, and just one other note, Mr. Mayor, and I don't, I don't want to forestall this any longer, but, uh, our meeting schedule is that we will be meeting next Wednesday, the twenty-third. Uh, we have two meetings scheduled in July, uh, not meeting in August, we'll come back September, and then two meetings in October. And, uh, hope to be doing community engagement during, uh, the latter half of that process, and then have something to council, uh, by November of this year.
Thank you. Council, uh, any questions on the timeline? All right. Seeing nothing, uh, I would look for a motion to, uh, make those appointments to the earned, sick, and safe leave tax, task force. Councilmember Coulter?
So moved.
Second?
Councilmember Coulter with the motion, second by Councilmember Martin to make the appointments to the earned, sick, and safe leave task force, as outlined in the staff materials. Hearing no further discussion from the council?
Mr. Mayor, can I make a friendly amendment?
If you would, please.
If the, if the motioners are okay, is to make sure that the additional name not in the staff report that was published, uh, Brittany Milan is also included, so actually nine appointments.
Thank you, is that a, that's a friendly amendment, everybody okay with that? Thank you for that correction, Mr. Verbrugge. So we have nine names. Looking to go forward, no further discussion. Ms. Christensen?
Thank you. Beloga?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries seven zero. And, uh, with the expectation that we'll get a couple of additional names in the very near future, thank you much. Our final item tonight is eight point three, city council policy and issue update, Mr. Verbrugge?
Um, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, I only have, uh, one really quick item this evening, 'cause I know you didn't actually make a motion to extend here, so I'll be fast. Legislature's back in session. Um, we are constantly getting information even this evening. It looks like they're getting close to an agreement on the off-ramp for the eviction moratorium. Uh, I'm expecting that a tax bill is going to be published on Wednesday. Uh, we've seen a draft of that. Uh, what's in the draft is the, uh, economic development provisions that we have been interested in, primarily the Tiff districts at, uh, Ninety-Eighth and, uh, Lyndale as well, or Ninety-Eighth and Aldrich. And then also, uh, American Boulevard in Lyndale, uh, as well as, um, the language around hospitality. Uh, what is not in the draft is, uh, something of interest to us, and that is the sales tax exemptions for capital projects. It's not just the Bloomington Fire Station project, it appears to be, uh, all of the requested projects. So, not sure what the story is on that, but it's not currently in the draft.
Well, that's a nasty surprise.
It wa- it was an unwelcome surprise, but I'm sure when they're trying to get a budget agreement, that's a, that's actually a pretty big ticket item. I think it's somewhere in the neighborhood of twenty to thirty million dollars.
Council, any questions on that? Anything additional for our issues update? Councilmember Coulter, and here's the sad part, I keep looking at the screen to see Councilmember Coulter raise his hand, and he's literally sitting next to me. Councilmember Coulter?
I'm just glad you're seeing me. Um, just a very, very quick thanks to our Bloomington Fire Department. Um, my family, as many others do in this city, participates in a group of, uh, families with toddlers. And we had an event at Valley View Park, uh, this past Saturday, and our Bloomington firefighters brought a fire truck. And so the toddlers got to see the fire truck and go inside, and, uh, my daughter was particularly pleased with all the big buttons. Um, so just, it was really, really a fun event, and, and, um, just wanted to thank the Bloomington Fire Fighter, Fire Department for, uh, making that possible.
Well done. Anything additional? Seeing no one coming forward, I'd look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
We have a motion by Councilmember Carter, second by Councilmember Martin for adjournment. Hearing no further discussion, Ms. Christensen?
Thank you. Beloga?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero, we are adjourned. Thank you much, uh, to staff, thanks to our councilmembers, both, uh, present and, uh, remote for your participation this evening. And thanks to everybody who is here with us tonight and who is watching, so thank you very much. Good to see everybody back in the council chambers again, so have a good night, everyone.
Night, folks.